Dakota Pine Ridge Reservation and do a service project there. So I'm going to introduce them and let them take it from there.
Thank you. Thank you for asking us to come. I'm Stacy Levin. I'm the Administrative Assistant at MG21. And we traveled to the Pine Ridge Reservation in South Dakota with seven students. And so we traveled to a place called Remember. And Remember is an organization, thank you. Remember is an organization on the Oglala Lakota Nation's Reservation. And they have been working with the Lakota people for, since 1997. And when they first went out there, they started building bunk beds. And there are a lot of houses, households there that could consist of 12 to 15 people that fill a house. And so there's lots of people who even today don't have beds. And there were, you know, sometimes children would sleep in bathtubs and things like that. So that was their, their first opportunity to help support the reservation. And as time went on, they, they found other needs. They build wheelchair ramps. There's a lot of diabetes out there. They skirt trailers because that contains the heat, which also speaks to, they build outhouses. Or when we were there, we built outhouses, right? And, and we installed them. Because sometimes people either don't have any plumbing due to where they live, or, or because during the wintertime when it gets cold, sometimes they have to make a choice between heat and water. And another thing they do is chop wood and they deliver wood. They do a lot of things. And they have a really strong relationship with a lot of people in the community. And I just wanted to give you some statistics. This was, I think, a really great opportunity for students to go out there and do some service work, but also to learn about the Oglala Lakota Nation from the Lakota people themselves. They learned about their culture and their history. And we learned a lot of statistics. Just so you know, Remember, re- member is referring to putting back that which is broken. So that was their goal, to support that. Average life expectancy on the Pine Ridge Reservation is about 66 years old. They have the lowest per capita income. It's about $8,700 for the year. They have a very high rate of suicide, even among really, really little kids. They have a very high percent of infant mortality, high percentage of tuberculosis, and as I mentioned, diabetes. And about 50% of adults over the age of 40 have diabetes on the reservation. But I also want to say before I turn this over to Joey, that through, that's only one piece of the puzzle, you know, on the reservation. It's really a beautiful place. And we also experienced the joy and the beauty and, and people are, are, you know, you know, they're happy and love to share themselves. And there's a lot of beauty there. So through all their challenges, we also got to see that too. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Joey. I'm a senior at MG21. And I guess I'm just going to describe some of the pictures from our slideshow. And then I'm going to give a little snippet about like some things that I learned and just kind of my overall experience there.
Can I go back?
Yeah. So this is just an aerial shot of like the actual place that we stayed at, Remember. In the red, like cabin in the back, that's where we stayed. I forgot what the name of the cabin is. That's what it's called.
This is the wide open spaces of South Dakota.
And then this is Dignity of Earth and Sky. This is, I don't really remember.
Oops. I can't keep it.
After we stayed a night in Minnesota, in Luverne, Minnesota, about an hour after driving, we stopped at this statue, Dignity of Earth and Sky. I don't know a ton about this one.
And she was, she was built, I can't remember now. I think it was about five years ago. She was dedicated to the land and, and the people who live on it. And she's in Chamberlain, South Dakota. And she's a woman being presented with a blanket as a gift.
This is an older picture of students a couple of years ago, but it's a great kind of snapshot of them kind of in front of the, the sign of the Remember camp, I guess.
Doesn't all fit.
This was a game that we learned. It was, it's so hard to explain. I don't even remember how to play the game. It was really fun when we did play it. It was like you had to mix up these sticks. And on one of the sticks, there was like a band on it. So you'd mix up the sticks and you'd hold them out and one person would like guess which hand. There was two people doing it. It was confusing, but it was a really fun game. And there was beautiful music behind it. There was a, a live singer and live drummer. They aren't pictured in these, but they were singing for like 20 minutes straight. It was very impressive and very beautiful. And I think it was really cool to learn about like these traditional games that they do still play. And they do play these games competitively at the high schools over there. They have like clubs and stuff, which I think was really cool.
Grandpa Will.
And that's Will Peters. It's Will Peters is awesome. He, he was one of the speakers that came in and talked to us. He gave a beautiful, beautiful performance on a native flute. One of the students who went on the trip, Matthew Martinez.
There's Matt.
Bought the flute. There he is with the flute. And he, he picked up the flute and immediately he was a natural at it. Like it sounded just like when Will Peters was playing it. He's a NAMI Award winner, by the way.
We were hoping to get Matt to come and play for you tonight, but he had to work.
And that's just the slide.
This is the workshop where they do a lot of the work on building the beds and things.
And outhouses and, and this is a picture of digging that six foot hole for an outhouse. It was quite a feat. I was so proud of these guys.
It was hot when you were there.
It was super hot. It was in the 90s when they were there, the week that they were there.
Yeah.
How long did it take to dig that hole?
Oh, I'd say probably four, four hours. Yeah.
This is students building steps and a wheelchair ramp.
And then skirting a trailer. There's a community garden that they're now trying to support because it's a food desert. So they're supporting the community with that. And there's Joey and a dog with the trailer. Don't talk about that.
This was from, we stopped at this like, kind of like art and like art supplies store. I don't really know, was there more to it or was it just the store?
It's just a store.
Okay. But there were horses there and we just all, I guess, ran to the horses and just hung out with them. That was our first instinct was to go directly to the horses. But the shop was really, really cool. And it's where most of the people who sell stuff on the reservation, like beadwork and dream catchers and like bags and stuff, that's where they get most of their supplies to make and sell those things. And that's how most of the people on the reservation make a living is by selling handmade artwork like that. This is what's known as the Sanctuary. This is in the Badlands. It's basically like this, like this chamber that just, I can't really explain it. You can hear a pin drop from all the way across the canyon sort of thing. And it's, we sat in there for around 20 minutes in silence and it was so silent. You could hear like your heart pumping through your veins. It was, it was insane. It was so quiet and it was a beautiful experience.
Not used to seeing stars like this in Dane County. So we included that. Every night looked like that. It was just beautiful. And that's the group. That's the last slide.
And I, I will read my little snippet now and get it up because I don't have it memorized. Pine Ridge Native Reservation, South Dakota, USA. I've been to South Dakota a few times prior to this trip, but none of those experiences can even come close to this one. It has been an honor serving and supporting the Oglala Lakota people. It truly feels like a gift to be able to have experienced their culture and get to know the people while serving their community. My perspective on this country was always very mixed. Learning about the centuries of neglect, racism, genocide, massacre, poverty, and just overall mistreatment to the Native Americans has given me a completely different view on our country. We built America on stolen land. There should be no argument in that statement. Getting to experience the Badlands and Black Hills through the perspective of a Native American was one of the most eye-opening things. That land is sacred to the Oglala Lakota people. Statistics say that the Pine Ridge Reservation is the poorest county in America. But the entire time, I kept saying to myself, these people aren't poor. They're rich with life, love, culture, tradition, family, and so much more. This has been the best experience of my life, from tearing down and rebuilding a ramp to sitting with my graduating class and watching the sunset in the rolling hills while talking about middle school. I will never forget a single moment of this trip. Thank you to Remember and thank you to the Oglala Lakota people.
Thank you.
That sounds like an amazing trip.
Have any questions for Joey?
Susan.
Can we go next?
I already asked.
How many years have we gone on this trip? And so I had a picture of a past trip.
This was the third.
Third, okay.
Is this something that other schools also do? Or is this something unique to MG21 to build that relationship?
It started with another teacher, or who was a teacher, Jean Delcourt, taught at Shabazz for many, many years. And this was probably his 16th trip there. So Shabazz, at least in this area, Shabazz and West, or no, actually, I think it was East, went there many, many years ago together and that introduced it to him. But usually, this time we went, it's the first time, this was my seventh year, it was the first time nobody was there but us. And it was actually kind of special, but usually there's other groups that are either, there's middle schools, high schools, colleges, religious groups who can't proselytize. Sometimes single people, you can go. Usually there can be up to 40 people there at a time.
Thank you so much for putting the presentation together. This was really, really awesome. And I'm so, so glad that you had the experience.
Thank you.
Before we move past recognitions, the board would like to just take a brief moment to mark Dr. Friedrich's 100-day milestone with the district. So I have a brief statement I'd like to read on behalf of the board. The board would like to recognize Dr. Friedrich for the completion of her first 100 days as our superintendent. We continue to be impressed by her work ethic, openness to feedback, and commitment to transparency and collaboration. Additionally, it's clear that Dr. Friedrich cares deeply about forming relationships with staff, students, and the community, as evidenced by her accountability of time data that she regularly shares. We are grateful for the impact that you've made to our district already, and we look forward to continued collaboration for the next 100 days and beyond. Congratulations on that first 100 days. Okay, so moving on to public appearances, we have a number tonight. I did want to just note that we are waiving, as we have in past meetings recently, we're waiving the 15-minute limit, so everyone will have a chance to speak. And just a couple comments on sort of how this works. Three minutes per speaker. Tish will be keeping time and will, I believe, give me a signal if we're getting close to that three minutes. And likewise, let the speaker know that we're, we're getting close to the end. And I'll, I'll call you up in the order that you signed up to speak. So our first speaker tonight will be Julie Roche. And if I mispronounce a name, I apologize in advance.
I wasn't expecting you to come up here to do this, but good evening. I'm Julie Roche. I'm an Admin Assistant at Brandon Ridge. I've been with the district for 27 years. I'm here to say that the proposed insurance changes are not supported by many in our school or the district. Just 10 months ago, many of us had to make a change in doctors due to the district dropping courts. This all takes time, finding new doctors and trying to reschedule all the appointments that we've had made and getting it all switched over to whomever we had to change to, whether it would be Dean or GHC. Now we would possibly need to do this again and to change, some of us have many doctors we need to see. And to change our families over is, it's hard. It's time-consuming. We'd really like you guys to consider to find a way to maintain our current providers. Another reason for non-support of this proposal is the impact of the different employee groups. The average administrator would contribute less than 3% of their income, teachers 5%, and for admin assistants and pairs, more than 10% of their income. This, we're the lowest paid group here. Come on, 10%? We did not create the budget crisis, and we know you guys know this, but we don't feel that we should bear the brunt of fixing it. If the district must move to a high deductible plan, please do not leave so much of the deductible burden on the employees. We're asking that you please move to at least $2,500 for single, $5,000 family contribution. And what you've currently proposed is more than a $400 pay cut for those with single plans and more than 700 pay cut for those with family plans. That's not fair to any employee and it's certainly not equitable for paraprofessionals, building service employees, or admin assistants. And we haven't even heard about the whole plan, the prescriptions, anything like that. So I used to think, sure, our wage is lower than other school districts around us, but I was thinking, wow, our insurance package is phenomenal and it helps make up through the lower wages. And this proposal is cutting way into our budgets even more. Let's be honest, the staff is a huge part of what makes our district so desirable to be part of, whether it's to work here or to have our kids go to school here. My kids are in their 30s. They all, they, they went here. They loved it. We loved having our kids in the district. But I don't understand how you guys expect to keep our current staff or even add new staff with our current wages in this proposal.
Thank you.
Yep. Hi, thanks for your time tonight. My name is Alana Wagner. This is my 13th year as an educator in the district. My ask tonight is simple. Please do not support the proposed insurance changes as they will have a disproportionate and detrimental impact on staff. As we look through the information, one might believe that the changes are only positive. And at first glance, they paint a pretty picture, but they don't account for the cost that will be borne by employees. This is a benefit cut to go from two carriers to one, from a traditional plan to a high deductible plan, to increase the employee's portion of the deductible passes the cost on to us. The intention behind this seems to be to fix the budget crisis, but our staff didn't create the crisis and shouldn't absorb the majority of its impact. I am one of 237 district employees who along with our families would go through a major healthcare transition for the second time in one year. We represent half the folks who subscribe to the district's insurance. Throughout the past 13 years, I've carried UW insurance through Unity, Quartz, and GHC. Last November, my youngest daughter injured her hip, resulting in an underlying hip diagnosis. And it was a difficult transition to GHC. It was March before we found her a new physical therapist and August before she had a new mental health provider. However, now we have the best possible people to care for her when she undergoes surgery this November. Her physical therapist works with adolescent athletes recovering from this surgery and her surgeon is the top UW orthopedic surgeon for this diagnosis. Because of the bone healing involved, her six-month-long recovery won't start until January, right as the transition to Dean would begin. I know Dean has good providers, but to presume that providers can just be easily exchanged ignores the impact on those of us who currently have GHC and UW providers that we know and trust. Tonight, I ask you to find a way to carry us forward that minimizes the cost to employees and maintains a plan with two carriers. The district should not expect to get a 0% increase for health insurance in 2025. To renew the current plan would cost the district 4.8% compared to the 7% that the budget, district budgeted. Choice in providers has long been an MG value. Staff have consistently asked to maintain these options in lieu of moving to a single carrier. Please don't change our insurance plan now, a month before open enrollment and three months before the change would take place. Don't place the burden of the financial crisis on our staff and their families. Please do not support the changes as they are proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Haynes?
My name is Isabel Haynes. I'm an English teacher at MG21 in my second year of teaching. And I'm speaking today to urge the school board to reject the insurance changes that the district has currently proposed until suitable revisions are made. I've spent a lot of time in the medical system, getting blood draws, doctor's office visits, therapy appointments, and several significant surgeries. The medical care I've received has improved and arguably saved my life. For the first 26 years of my life, I had group health insurance through my parents. It was on this insurance many years ago that I first began my gender transition. GHC at the time had few doctors with experience treating transgender women, and at times I felt that I was educating my doctor more than she was educating me. Yet that doctor was eager to learn and over the years, we formed a productive partnership, teaching each other and growing together. When I was 26, I was apprehensive about leaving her and the care team that I had come to know so well and in whose hands I finally felt respected and safe. In the two years since, I have had to change insurance four times. When I joined this district, I was pleased at the offering of Quartz Insurance. UW Health has a fantastic gender-affirming care program and I had great success with my care there. While I was frustrated at having to change insurance again last year, at least I was able to switch back to group health to the familiar office of my original doctor, who I now discovered has many other transgender patients and has put the knowledge we gained together all those years ago to great use. This year, not only am I forced to change insurance for a fifth time in 30 months, I am forced to change to an insurance provider that is 45% owned by SSM, an organization which has explicitly rejected the guidelines of the American Medical Association to provide gender-affirming care to transgender people like myself. When I heard the news of this insurance change, I feared for my ability to receive care and medication that is medically necessary for myself. At the very least, several of the largest in-network clinics for my insurance will not provide services that I need. It also means that I will likely be forced again to change primary care provider, which, based on my past experiences, means educating a new doctor about how to effectively provide me with medical care. On top of all of this, as a person whose medical needs frequently meet deductible limits, my insurance costs may increase significantly. Any future procedures I need might be met with a massive bill depending on how many quarterly contributions the district has made thus far in the year to my HSA. I hope that the district, if it is at all possible, will allow employees the option to choose Quartz or GHC insurance. And barring that, at least raise their contribution to HSA accounts to $2,500 for a single plan and $5,000 for a family plan. Thank you.
Sheila Hibner.
My name is Sheila Hibner and I served the Monona Grove School District from 1984 to 2016. It was with great pride and honor. In 1984 up until 2016, we were taught by our administrators and our colleague elders that healthcare for current employees and the healthcare package in post-retirement was something that Monona Grove School District took very seriously. They knew that by taking care of employee health and by offering a worthwhile post-retirement health package, that they were honoring how important health is and how much they cared about their staff. Many of us were courted over the years by other districts who offered more money. It was not attractive to us because we loved Monona Grove and we knew that this district would always put our health needs first. So over the course of 32 years that I taught here, I gave up approximately $10,000 a year to honor my commitment to Monona Grove and to be taken care of after retirement. So I lost about $320,000 by not leaving Monona Grove. I never winced. The healthcare that I was receiving and would receive was worth every penny. Over the years, we've seen premiums go up, we've seen deductibles go up, we now pay a share for MRIs and CT scans, more for prescriptions. But remember, a retirement income is static. When you have an increase, there is no additional money in your budget. It comes from somewhere. But still, we didn't complain. We had great healthcare. One of the reasons I was satisfied was because I had choice. UW hospitals, the Cadillac for cancer and heart care, was always an option. I can say that even transitioning to GHC last year, although I wasn't thrilled, has been great because I still had access to UW health providers. Dean healthcare being the only choice is simply not acceptable. In fact, I would consider it's a breach of what was promised in 1984 to me. No choice, one provider. In the retiree meeting this morning, we heard emotional stories of people with cancer, with heart disease, with autoimmune disease, with pulmonary disease and the like, spouses that have MS and other, other significant challenges. The caregiver teams who they have formed now twice, potentially in two years, they've built relationships with. To force these people, who are fiercely loyal to this school district, into one provider system is not only unfair, I think it's immoral. Personally, I will give up my own genetic cancer counselor at Carbone and I will give up my cardiologist at UW Health.
We're at time, Sheila.
Can I just wrap it up? I'm asking you to do one thing. Call the other districts that have gone to Dean only. Talk to their operations administrator and ask them how things are going. I serve as president of the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District. The emails that I get from our staff, the stories I hear are heartbreaking, and I think you should take the time to check out the other districts that have gone Dean only. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jake Altwig.
Good job on the last one. My name is Jake Altwig and I retired from the district in 2016 after teaching so
The emails that I get from our staff, the stories I hear are heartbreaking, and I think you should take the time to check out the other districts that have gone Dean only. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jake Altwig, and I retired from the district in 2016 after teaching social studies at the high school for 22 years. Many words come to my mind as I think about what appears to be going on here. Confused, disappointed, blindsided. However, tonight, I'm going to go with upset. First, I'm upset that I was one of a handful of folks who did not receive the communication that went out late on Friday. I realize it was a mistake, but it was a mistake that should not have happened. Luckily for me, Sheila Hibner texted me to see how I felt about it, so I was able to get an update from her. Second, I'm upset that the first that I, or any other retiree, and I believe current staff members as well, heard about this was late Friday afternoon, a mere five days ago. Proposed changes that are this significant to a large number of people should not be kept under wraps until the 11th hour. At best, this fosters mistrust. Open communication goes a long way toward cultivating good relationships, even when we don't agree on everything. In this case, the communication was sorely lacking. Third, I'm upset that my family will be forced, yes, forced, to switch health insurance providers for the third time in roughly 10 years and for the second year in a row. We had GHC years ago. It was eliminated as a choice, so we were forced to change providers. We then switched to Quartz, and it was eliminated last year, forcing us to change providers again. We're back to GHC this year, but we're forced to change yet again. Not everyone has been forced to change this many times, but we have, and it's stressful and frankly, highly irritating. Finally, related to the forced changes in health insurance providers, it seems as though no consideration has been given to continuity of care. This also upsets me. One's relationship with their healthcare providers is very important, and having to frequently seek new providers is both stressful and requires restarting those vital relationships from scratch. In addition, for those receiving mental health care, frequently making provider changes can be extremely stressful since the patient-provided relationship is so important to their progress and their overall well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Frederick. My name's Katie Morrow. I live at 319 Sounding Grange in Cottage Grove. I sit before you tonight as a concerned parent and community leader. I'm also a mom to five boys, three of whom that are currently in our school district and three different schools. When we moved to the district 18 years ago, we did so for the schools and the teachers. In my previous role before having children, I worked with several school districts in the area, and Monona Grove always stood out to me. We had exceptional teachers, better test scores, lower violence, and a strong reputation for putting our education first. Our teachers believed this, the success, believed in the success, and they were valued and dedicated to our district. I'm very deeply concerned with the sudden changes, especially in the healthcare insurance plans for our teachers. Currently, they have a choice between GHC and Dean, but starting in January, that choice will be eliminated, and it'll be Dean only. This shift will disrupt services for many teachers and staff that they depend on. Families who rely on the UW health system don't have the luxury of finding new providers. They need access to the UW specialized care. Losing GHC removes this as an option, leaving them without the care that they require. Additionally, this change disproportionately affects those who need gender-affirming care. Dean doesn't provide the same level of care and coverage. And some teachers and staff, this would change and eliminate access to the essential healthcare services that they need. We can't overlook the major impacts that this will have on the individuals' lives. We need to ensure that our staff has access to a full range of care they need and deserve. I understand the financial pressures are a reality, but we have to consider the bigger picture. In the past, teachers in the districts have taken pay freezes to keep their insurance options. Can we explore a solution where GHC remains as a second option, even if it requires teachers and staff to pay a little bit more but keep their providers? We live in a world where flexibility is a necessity, and it's critical that we provide options to everyone. As a parent, I supported the referendum because I believe in investing in our schools. We have to remember that teachers did not create this budget crisis, and the district should not balance the budget through benefit cuts. The approach is unfair to the educators who have and already have to sacrifice so much, and this will harm the long-term success in our district. As a parent with a child with rare genetic disease, I deal with insurance headaches on a daily basis, from formulary restrictions to PBMs and co-pay accumulators. For many, navigating this healthcare has become a nightmare. You need to take the time to check in with your staff and what they want and need. If you don't, you risk losing the dedicated teachers and staff that we have, and that makes the district what it is. Replacing them won't be easy, and a job that's thankless and underpaid benefits matter greatly in retention and recruitment of excellent staff. I really urge you to reconsider this decision and engage in a dialogue with the staff. We need to find a solution that supports both the district's financial stability and the health and wellbeing of our educators. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, thank you for hearing our voices. My name is Tracy Ellingson. This is my 26 years as a special ed teacher in this district and my 32nd year of teaching. We did not create this budget crisis. Dan Olson and Mark Powell's mismanagement did. It feels like it is falling on us educators, paras, administrative assistants, and our building services to fix the problem with less pay and higher insurance costs. I will admit that I felt very angry and frustrated when I first found out about the deficit. Now you can add fear because of the new insurance proposal. I am asking all of you, please do not support the insurance changes as proposed. They go too far and have too great of impact on employees. When you strictly look at numbers only and not the people behind those numbers, you are not getting the whole picture. Many of my colleagues and I were shocked to hear about the proposal of going to a one-carry insurance, especially after half of us just changed to GHC this year. Most of us are just getting settled with the new systems, and now you want us all to change that in January. I've had many colleagues, many of my colleagues, reach out in tears telling me stories of their son's cystic fibrosis and the medical care needed with prescriptions and specialty doctors, or my colleague whose child has a brain malformation and all their medical needs, another who just got their child into a counselor that they love and feel comfortable with, another who will meet the $6,000 out-of-cost expense the first month, another who has a child with special needs and extensive medical needs and doctors. The list goes on and on, but here's my story. Here are the numbers and changes of my family. Five new family practitioners who we love. We grew up with them. We love them. A dermatologist, an allergist, a gastrologist, a neurologist, an endocrinologist, an oncologist, a podiatrist, a urologist, an orthopedic, and have the ISs, an orthopedic doctor, and an optometrist. These are the doctors who take months to get in. These are the doctors that we already have appointments set up for next year. These are the doctors who've been life-changing for my family. One of my kids has a chronic skin condition that was causing her so much pain that when anything touched her skin, it hurt. Her skin on her face was wrinkled and hard. She was crying constantly. Her dermatologist finally found what was causing her issue. She was placed on a new medication that changed her life. Her skin healed, and she's happy now. Her doctor never quit trying to figure out what was going on. The drug she is on is Dupixent. It costs four grand a month. I'm worried that I will have to come up with that coverage in January. This is just one example. I have another child with Hashimoto's disease. This brings a whole new other set of issues: monthly blood draws and specialists working together to find the correct dosage of medication. How can we begin to get things in order before we need to change? You have given us no time to make sure transition plans for switching insurances are in place. I am worried about what will happen to my children and all of the others who have spoke or who are behind the scenes telling us their stories. I am asking you again, please do not support the insurance changes as proposed. They go too far and have too great of impact on employees. Please find ways to compromise. If it is possible to maintain the current plan with two carriers, please do so. Give us more time to contemplate such significant changes.
Good evening. My name is Chris Halverson. I'm currently an administrative assistant at Granite Ridge School. I've been an employee in the school district for 24 years. I've worked at Maywood School, Nichols School, Wenecole School, Monona Grove High School, Cottage Grove School, and now Granite Ridge School. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the proposed insurance changes, and I ask the school board not to support those changes as they are currently proposed. Making the move to a single provider and changing to a high-deductible healthcare plan is a lot of change for employees to navigate, and to be clear, it is a benefit cut for MGSD employees. It was just a short 10 months ago when Quartz Insurance was dropped by the district, as you've heard, and many of us were uprooted from our trusted healthcare providers. Those of us who used to be Quartz people and who kept our primary UW providers in hopes of minimizing the disruption to our services were rudely surprised to find out that everything we valued about our healthcare has changed: new doctors, new locations, different hospitals, different urgent cares, and there has been no continuity of care for us. Let's also remember that it was the Dean HMO plan that effectively priced out many of us and our trusted health service professionals that we had then when they tripled their rates as the district brought in their new provider of Quartz. Why should we believe that this would not happen again? Are the HSA contributions from MG guaranteed year after year, or will they be like our stipends that were a one-time payout? Will employer contributions increase with increasing costs of our healthcare? There are so many unknowns with this proposed change. For some of us, prescription prices and ongoing therapies would be extremely expensive in this new plan and will negate our meager salary increases. You've all heard this before, but it is not fair to balance this district budget on the backs of the employees who had no part in creating this crisis. Why should the district remain budget-neutral with the employees anything else? I ask you to vote against this proposal because of how inequitable its financial impact is among employee groups. For example, my group of administrative assistants and paraprofessionals will be giving up more than 10% of our income compared to administrators who will only give up 3% and teachers who are giving up 5%. And in fact, some of the lowest-paid employees would be expected to give up to as much as 13% of their income for this new insurance plan. I ask you to please vote no to this proposal and instead work with MGEA to find win-wins that provide the district some savings from our already-budgeted insurance increases. Voting against this proposal not only buys time for better solutions to be found, but can also buy much-needed goodwill for your district employees. In light of all that has transpired in recent months, I respectfully request that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Sullivan. I'm a high school English teacher. When I started in the district 25 years ago, I learned that we had low salaries, but that because we were on the state's health insurance plan, we had great healthcare. Additionally, teachers would receive health insurance until age 70. In 2000, the state's insurance plan offered five options for health insurance, and being new to the area, I consulted my in-laws who told me about Dean Insurance and took their recommendation for joining that plan. I received excellent care, including a serious life-threatening issue with my first pregnancy. We didn't have to worry about it because it was covered. In 2011, we lost the opportunity to be a part of the state's insurance plan with the passing of Act 10. Along with that, I probably lost an estimated $100,000 in retirement benefits with the loss of insurance benefits till age 70, and along with that, teachers across the state received a huge pay cut when districts like ours were forced to have educators pay into their insurance. The pay cut, along with having to pick a more cost-effective provider for my family, meant switching to Unity UW Health. We changed all of our providers, and each year for the next couple of years, we paid more for health insurance while our salaries inched along to catch up. I can remember at least two pay freezes where staff salaries didn't advance at all, and then inequities in our district office moved us from different pay structures. Additionally, switching providers from Quartz to GHC required hours of our own personal time to shift to get new doctors, get referrals, deal with pre-authorizations, many things that some of us have never had to deal with before. It also caused a lot of educators to feel really stressed waiting for pre-authorizations to go through, trying to find appointments needed in a timely manner, learning there was one urgent care for the entirety of GHC. We've all settled in now, and many educators are back to the stress of another shift, which is disrupting the consistency of our care for ourselves and our families. Some employees already have appointments and healthcare procedures scheduled in 2025. Since 2011, I'm an active member of the MGEA because I truly believe that working together with other people, we can find better solutions, and it is a key to education. The MGA has supported and done most of the legwork on all of the referendum the district has needed to keep things going since 2011, when the state legislature began underspending public education, which continues today. The MGA worked tirelessly in the background, sending postcards, calling voters, providing yard signs to build support, and even when our previous superintendent hardly did anything to do that support, to build that support. And now, this latest budget crisis, where we heard promises about not balancing the district and board's mistakes off the backs of teachers, but that is exactly what's happening. We worked so hard for this board and this district to make sure our students had the resources they needed through those referenda, but now we need those resources to support our family, and instead, we're going to end up paying for the district's mistakes. Our pay increase will barely cover the cost-of-living pay increase, and on top of that, any pay raise we receive will be squandered by the rising cost of healthcare. Not only am I angry, but I'm disappointed because it hurts to be feeling like this, as if spending half of my life in this district doesn't matter as much as it used to. I am hopeful that you will consider increasing the payment to our deductible to offset the burden of having half of our employees have to shift again to a new provider. I'm also hopeful that we can learn about long-term plan for healthcare in this district for the future so we can make plans, and I'm hopeful you might be able to figure out a way to pause this shift and give staff more time before making this change so we can have a better understanding of our healthcare going forward.
We're out of time. Thank you.
Bythe.
Bythe. Had a 50/50 shot.
Sorry. My name's Ginger Bythe, and I teach at Taylor Prairie. I've been proudly a member of Team MG for the last 18 years. When us teachers go into teaching, we know that teacher pay is low, but it's always been offset by our amazing benefits. This change you are proposing to our healthcare is really upsetting. I've utilized our insurance more times than I ever wished to. This past year, my husband was in an accident where he took a baseball bat to the face. He suffered a traumatic brain injury and 20-plus fractures to his face. I have three kids. Last year, my family of five, we tallied four MRIs, two bone scans, five CT scans, nine sets of X-rays, four surgeries, over 20 stitches. We saw 17 different specialists, and we attended 125 appointments. We averaged almost three appointments a day from May until the end of last year. My husband was out of work on long-term disability for a year. I had to take multiple weeks off without pay to take care of him, but I knew we were okay because of our insurance. A week into my husband's accident, we had been to the ER three times, and we had seen two specialists. My husband hadn't slept for five days because he couldn't breathe through his nose. And while I was driving him to the ER for the fourth time in six days, I knew that I wasn't going to be burdened by the increase in the cost of a bill that I would receive. I never had to worry if his bills were going to ruin us financially. I knew I could take him to all of his specialist appointments, and I can see the best doctors in the Midwest, and I could still pay my mortgage. Having the insurance we do during his accident, it kept me calm. It was the one thing that I could count on. With this new plan, I will meet our deductible within the first three weeks of next year. Over the years, you have continued to chip away at our benefits without giving us anything in return. While taking away some of our gold standard benefits, you have asked staff to take on more in an increasingly tough environment. You've increased our FTEs. You've increased our workloads. You've failed to maintain a safe school environment with increasingly dangerous student behaviors, and you literally ask us to lay our lives down, lay down our lives for our students while practicing active shooter drills. These changes have led to an increase in staff having to see providers for our mental health. What is asked of staff is unsustainable. Today, I'm here asking you to reconsider this change or at the very least, increase the district's contribution to the HSA. And please don't use the "remember your why." It's a toxic term. Team MG loves our students, and they are a big part of our why. But until our whys can pay our bills, our mortgage, our car loans, staff need to be compensated, which includes keeping quality and affordable insurance. Otherwise, I fear we might see a mass exodus of our staff. I just ask you to remember that investing in our teachers is an investment in our students' future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully I said that correctly.
Hi, folks. I'm Lolo. I'm an SEA and glacial drumming. I've only been with you for a few weeks, and this is really just a jarring way to start a new job. a new job. My mother was a public school teacher for 30-some years back in Minneapolis and my dad was actually on the school board in Minneapolis for a term, so I empathize with the tough position y'all are in. Watching him go through that was the hardest part of his life that I've seen. But I, you know, I gotta come and be on this side of the table. The decision y'all are voting on today is just unsustainable for trans people. Quite frankly, the first thing I did when I got that email was cry and the second thing I did was go on Indeed. I cannot be on Dean Health. You've heard already about the track record they have with providing gender-affirming care or not. Yeah. I didn't gather my thoughts. I've cried a lot in the last few days. I've spent the last year trying to access gender-affirming care and I have dates on the books. If this change would cause me to lose those, if Dean refuses to prior authorize, I have reached out to other trans people. There have been those experiences. I, it would really, it would ruin my life in a lot of ways. So, long-winded way of saying, should you vote yes, I'll be out of here as soon as I can be. It's just the truth of the matter, right? I'm here for GHC health. And I can tell you from all the trans people I know, when you get a new job, the first thing you do is check the health insurance, right? You don't accept a job offer without looking at the health insurance. So, I wouldn't expect any more trans employees after this decision. That's just long and the short of it. So, grateful to be here.
My name's Dave Witty. I live at 5802 Winnequa Road in Monona and I'm here as a parent to show my support to the entire staff of the Monona Grove School District. I'm a Monona Grove alum and I can remember growing up here and being surrounded by fabulous teachers who did enjoy what they were doing and did a wonderful job, partly because maybe their pay wasn't, wasn't the greatest, but we even as kids knew that they had great benefits. And I'm here to say, I think you are all very good people. I think that a lot of you are getting slammed because of the budget crisis and I think others maybe should be taking more of the ownership who are no longer here. And I think why I'm here is to speak to you as a parent and let you know that we moved here four years ago for one reason, for the school district. And I am terrified that the wonderful people behind me, who are the ones that teach my three daughters in high school and in the middle school, will no longer be here because of this decision. I ask you to please push this decision aside, talk more with the union, come up with some more options, and know that it's not just the staff who is against this, but it's also the parents who have been informed. And I'm not sure how many parents have been informed and realized the impact that this may have on the staff that is teaching their students. So I ask you, please, think about this more, try to work with the union, try to work with the teachers, and know that it's not just staff behind me there who are worried or upset, but it's parents who have children who love and care deeply about the staff that work here each and every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public appearances for the evening. I'd like to just say thank you to everybody who came out tonight and prepared a statement and was willing to come and speak. So with that, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
We'll do a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Rochelle?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Phillip? Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Okay. Phillip, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just making sure that there's no change in anything around our cooperative agreement regarding hockey, girls' hockey. It was in the consent agenda.
I didn't quite get that.
Did you ask if there were any changes?
Yeah, there any changes to the girls' hockey cooperative agreement?
No.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll have our board report from our student representative.
All right. Hi, everyone. If you don't know me, my name is Lena and I'm a junior at the high school and this is gonna be my first meeting where I'm presenting a report. However, before I present that report, I would like to also talk about a new direction for myself, the student representative, that the board president and superintendent approached me about when I took this position. So, in addition to the monthly reports on student activities, we decided to also focus on student opinion of student life and various social issues. So, we decided that every month in advisory, this is really loud, students are going to take the time to answer an anonymous two-minute survey to share their opinion on various topics. These surveys are focused on informative-based questions for now, but could evolve to include more reflective, thought-provoking questions. So, in collaboration with Dr. Frederick, I've created an in-progress plan for the school year's topics that I will share now and when I finish reading, I can take questions or we can figure out a way to take suggestions and be more collaborative on that. Great. So, our first topic will be mental health and those resources. And we're looking at, do students understand the resources that they have available and are these effective? Should I share the questions that I was planning to ask? No. Okay. Next, we've got a phone survey that's kind of looking at, do students understand and are able to manage their phone use and how that affects them personally and their focus in class? And how do they learn with it in the pouch with our current phone policy versus in their And, okay, sorry, not reading the questions. We are also going to talk about academic rigor. How do students assess the challenge of their courses and how do they overcome it? Like, are our resources that we provide, are they enough? Are they being utilized? Are students even aware of them, which is really important? We're also going to talk about student voice and decision-making, making sure that student, well, first, asking if students feel that their voices are being heard enough in decision-making, like school policies, activities, or even changes. And, excuse me, how comfortable they are with reaching out to representatives like myself or other leaders within the school to get their voices heard. So, these are the first four topics that we've got for now. And as I said before, we're planning on doing it for the remaining eight months, starting in November. So, there are still four, four surveys that we have left to develop. And so that is what I would really love your feedback and help with. But I can share this document with you all and we can collaborate on that? Yes? Okay. Sounds good.
Well, sorta.
Well. I don't know how that's gonna work. So, when Lena and I met, one of the things that we talked about were what would be things that youth would want adults and a governing board to know about and topics of interest. So, we just brainstormed three or four, but then also thinking, what might be items that would be coming up as board work that we could add that voice to also? We didn't get, we didn't get through it all, but would love to hear if anybody had suggestions of things, you know, as we talked about doing like a two-question Tuesday or Thursday once a month for high school kids, just to give us some general input on topics of interest as you're thinking about, you know, how are they feeling about things, thinking about things and lending their voice to that. So, if there's any burning topics, we went with the things that we were hearing a lot about, mental health, how hard are your classes and are you coping with it? Cell phones, always a thing, is where we were looking at. But we'd love to hear, you know, I think you were open to other topics that people might want to hear from our high schoolers about.
I think, yeah, it sounds great to me. It's an important thing to do, go this direction. We have to think about how we do it. We can't, it's difficult with open meetings law for the board to have a discussion prior and to work on this as a whole. And what I think we should do is work on a structure within the board that really a person who can work straight up with you and with Tanya, I think, to sort of devise these things ahead of time, to try and think about it ahead of time so that we can go that way. But think about having a structure of the board to interact with that and help.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. It's also, you know, a fresh idea for me, so it's something I'll have to think about too. And I'm sure I'll have some ideas.
I appreciate that you've come to us and asked for ways for us to be involved with you and with the students. It's really wonderful to feel welcomed in the buildings and to be able to watch and be a part of things that you do. A clear example was, you know, homecoming game. I mean, to see all the students that were in the families that were there for the players and the band and the coaches and, I mean, there's Tanya and Elizabeth Cook and, I mean, families and it was just wonderful. And then to have a football coach wave at you as he goes off the field, you know? I mean, so find us ways that students are comfortable with having us there and talk to us.
What?
Did you have something, Elizabeth?
Am I just like a disembodied voice just piping into the boardroom? That must be really disconcerting. I'm sorry, everybody. A couple of things. One, I want to name that Tanya and I sat down with Lena last week to talk about, you know, now that we've had a student rep on the board for a couple of years now, it's a great opportunity for us to think about what is the real value of having a student rep? And I will say that meeting with you, Lena, was one of the most delightful meetings I've had in all of 2024, so thank you for that. One of the things that we did talk about were questions that came up fairly regularly in our conversations as either in groups, in board member, in our board meeting groups, and also just like conversations that we've been having with other community members, you know, or things that have come up. So, that's where some of these topics came from, just so you're aware of the context there. And I love the idea, and Lena, I had shared this with you when we met last week, but I want to reiterate this to the larger board, this idea of it being not just transactional, so not just what we need from students, but what students maybe could benefit from us. So, I think to your point, Susan, you know, kind of where is that reciprocity, I think would be a real benefit. So, thank you, Lena, for meeting with us. Thank you for taking it so seriously and putting it, oh, there I am, on my head now, putting it together in such a short turnaround time. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the document, kind of seeing how these first iterations of like real student feedback go and then kind of iterating from there. So, that's all. Thank you. Now, please take me off the screen, Tish. Thank you. Bye, everybody.
All right.
All right. Now to the general report.
Do you want to move on to the report?
Would you like me to read the entire thing or just some highlights? Highlights? Okay. So, I preface, "The Silver Eagles started off the school year very strong with excellence and excitement coming from every organization. The following is a brief summary of the many activities that the school has gotten up to in the first month of school. So, starting with music, roughly 50 tenor and bass students from GDS and Monona Grove High School were able to participate in UW Milwaukee Sing Out Festival in September, joining around 1,100 other singers from around the state. They gained instruction from world-class instructors and were able to sing with a lot of other experienced singers, which, as a singer myself, I can say is very helpful and hopefully will translate in performance. This past month, Monona Grove Coalition has been very busy, has raised Alzheimer's awareness as part of the youth movement against Alzheimer's and presented to advisories on suicide prevention and awareness. The group is also planning to support Appalachia High School in their time of grief with handwritten cards this week, speak to students about mental health awareness, and also recognize Filipino-American History Month in the school. Monona Grove has also welcomed, I believe, I was told, 23 Fulbright scholars from around the world for an extended period of time and they have been sitting in on classes to observe American school culture and learning experiences, especially at Monona Grove. Now, the high school hosted its annual activity fair in, I believe, the first month of, the first week of school, which features student representatives sharing about their various organizations and clubs and activities. This fair is super helpful for freshmen so that they know what is out there and anybody looking to see the other activities that Monona Grove offers. We are also proud to foster a new chapter of Letters of Love, an organization that spreads words of support and encouragement to children battling serious illnesses around the world. And actually, their first meeting was today. And then we also recognized nine Silver Eagles as Students of the Month and these were nominated by teachers for their commitment to inclusion and equity within the school. And the students' pictures can be seen across from the main office in the high school and I believe some more were added for October. Now, we can talk about homecoming. School spirit was at an all-time high. Representatives visited schools within the district, I believe Granite Ridge, Glacial Drumlin, Taylor Prairie, and Winnequa, and attended their pep rallies and spread a lot of cheer. And we also had our own, our own, our own pep rally on Friday before the football game where we defeated Oregon High School. We also featured the Monona Grove Band and Dance Team's halftime performances, which is always a highlight. Then on to the dance, the senior class officers planned a very successful Under the Sea Homecoming dance, which had around 9:50 in attendance. So, as you can see, the Silver Eagles have had a very successful start to the school year and I'm excited to see the progress that comes with October.
That was a terrific report. Was that your first report?
Yes, indeed.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
That was well done.
Thanks.
I really appreciated the, that you covered everything. Yeah.
There is also one more thing she didn't cover.
Oh, you're right. You're right. So, girls' tennis had sectionals today after advancing from subsectionals and I'm proud to say that myself and my partner will be making it to individual state next weekend and the team also made it to team state by winning sectionals. So, yeah, watch out for us. Here we come.
Yay. Congrats. That's awesome.
And any other comments before we move on? Peter?
I just wanted to note again how much I appreciate having a student representative on the board because with all of the tough stuff we do, to have somebody here to remind us what it's all about, I think, is just important. So, thank you.
You're too kind.
All right. Moving on to action items, we have one action item for tonight. I'll turn it over to Tanya and let her introduce it.
Yeah, so we did a first reading of a proposal to rescind policy. Let's see, what number we are here? 8760. This is a policy that allows us, that said that the district shall offer supplemental insurance to families and we historically had one student that enrolled and based on the things we talked about, would be looking for the board to move approval for rescinding this as presented.
I would move approval rescinding policy 8760 as presented.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Any discussion prior to the vote?
Just one question. Do we have?
Do we have any students now on it? Zero? Okay.
All right, Peter? Rochelle?
Aye.
Susan? Eric?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Philip? Aye. Eyes have it, motion carries. All right, moving into discussion, I'd like to invite Joe Schneider up to talk about our athletic and activity presentation.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Babcock and I run Crest Country and Track here at the high school. I'm a senior this year. Entering high school as a freshman and being part of a sport immediately gave me a sense of belonging. The upperclassmen welcomed me in and I felt like a part of something from day one. Participating in high school sports has taught me a lot about myself as I have experienced some of my highest highs and lowest lows. I've learned how to overcome adversity through multiple season-ending injuries. I have been able to celebrate not only individual accomplishments but also historic team accomplishments. It has taught me the value of going through the good times and bad with girls that feel like family, which has made everything so much better. As I've gotten older, I've been able to be the upperclassman for others. I've truly enjoyed getting the opportunity to be the role model and support system to them that I experience. The time demands of sports practices and competitions has forced me to be extra diligent in time management. Learning this at the high school level, I feel like, has prepared me very well for the future. Being a part of high school sports has been a huge part of who I am, but it has also taught me that my identity is much greater than being just an athlete.
Thanks for showing up and putting the effort into the presentations. That was great.
Can I go fill my water up?
All right. Moving on to our second discussion item, the Employee Healthcare Benefits Plan.
Okay. I believe Kristin Sobczynski and some of the team will be making their way in as we get ready.
Often we take a break about 8:30. If we want to do that before this discussion, maybe, I don't know if anybody...
Anybody like to take a break?
While they're setting up, we want to take a five-minute break? I don't care.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess before we continue.
The mics aren't working on the live.
The mics aren't working on what?
Oh.
All right, thank you.
Well, maybe that five minutes can help us figure it out.
Yeah, so...
Don't ask me.
All right, we'll be back in five minutes. Hi, Kristin.
Yeah, it stopped.
I need to...do you want to say anything before I turn over to Kristin?
Yeah, so, obviously, discussion item tonight to talk about health insurance renewal. We've put together a slide deck to walk through, you know, probably answer some of the questions of timeline and some detailed information. Hopefully, that will answer some questions, give the board, you know, a robust set of information about what would be, what the long-term strategy is behind this, but then also short-term strategy as we think about, not only from a budget perspective, but also, how do we begin to think about the amount of money that go to health insurance providers as opposed to in our employees' pockets or other structures? And so, we'll walk through that tonight and have opportunity for questions as Kristin walks through.
So, over the past several months, we've had a lot of conversations about our financial condition and just as a reminder, currently, right now, we have our 24-25 preliminary budget with a deficit of $1.8 million. If we land on a budget that our adjusted budget is with the same deficit, that will result in a $500,000 fund balance for the district. Fifteen percent of our fund balance should be around $9 billion, so we're very far from that goal in what is in policy. We are currently working on the adjusted budget, trying to narrow that gap as much as possible. Just for some frame of reference, the district does spend $7.5 million on health insurance, which was about 12.6% of all Fund X and XXII expenditures in the 22-23 school year. To give some comparison to Dean County districts, as you can see, as a percentage of all of our expenditures in Fund X and Fund XXII, we're the second highest in the area at 12.6%. And right now, we're just facing a situation where the rates and how they're increasing are just not sustainable with our current condition. The goal is really to get to a self-insured status, which would give us that flexibility to better control our cost. Self-insured is when the district would actually pay our claims directly to the provider. We would hire a third party that would administer those claims, but it would give us the opportunity to, in years when there's a savings, recoup those savings. We'd have stop loss if we had some bad years. We'd also have flexibility to have a plan design and a freedom of choice. We could design what we wanted and we'd be able to direct contract for different services. Fully insured is what we are now. We pay a premium that's dictated by the insurance company. Disadvantages of that is that the insurance company keeps the savings and losses, if we have any, are made up by increasing our premiums over several years. And there's really not a control that we have over plan design and network. The long-term strategy that we're looking for here is to provide competitive health benefits. We know we have to be competitive to attract staff. We know that the staffing market is difficult and we have to be competitive. We also want to be able to provide a benefit that can focus on our employees and their families and their health and well-being. Change that focus from sick care to really, how do we keep you well? What can we provide to keep you well by the introduction of a wellness clinic that would be dedicated to our employees? We want to improve access. We've heard a lot from both employees that are on GHC and Dean that have struggled with access and having a clinic would allow better access, a lower-cost option for acute care, and free labs. We also want to give staff some more control, how they get to make decisions about how they want to spend their money with regard to health insurance. Also, we want to mitigate our impact on our health insurance costs and our finances and provide this self-funded pathway to get that freedom of choice. We did have a very short timeline in which to turn this around. As you know, both Dr. Frederick and I started in the district July 1. We first got the renewal on the 17th of September. We quickly turned around next, the next week to try to get the advisory group together to get their feedback on the long-term strategy and a proposed plan, and we did meet several times after that to provide more clarity and answer questions. Last Friday, we did send out communication to via email. Last Friday, we did send out communication to via email and the website. We wish we would have done a better job with retirees. We are, we sincerely apologize for that. In hindsight, would have done better. We did have another staff meeting on the 7th with Dean leadership. And this morning, we had two meetings with the retirees discussing the proposed change as well. Tonight, we're here. And then we do have a meeting on Monday, looking for board action on this topic. Open enrollment is November 4th, which is why we have such a short turnaround time and why it feels like a condensed time, but did want to provide some background regarding the timeline. The Health Insurance Advisory Group, list the names there. Thank you, everyone, for attending and providing that feedback. It was very helpful to understand all perspectives as we talk about this complex benefit. To give some context on what our current plan is, we do have two providers. The deductible is 200, single, 400, family. We have $150 copay for urgent care and ER. And then we have our prescription copays depending upon tier. Copays will exist until the out-of-pocket max, so 6,600, single, 3,200, or 13,200, family. The district pays 90% of the lowest-cost plan, which is GHC. We currently almost have it even split with 216 employees on Dean, 237 on GHC. A lot of times, geography will dictate choices, so there are, you know, reasons that people pick the different plans. We did get an initial renewal of 4.8% of an increase, which would mean an increase of $355,000 to the district. The renewal, although, you know, about a 5%.
Can I just clarify that renewal? That was what GHC, that's dictated by GHC, right? Correct? Because they're the lowest plan?
Right. So, we, the district pays 90% of the lowest plan, so the employees that are on Dean have to pay the difference.
Right.
And so, the 4.8% is a result of the Dean increase, or the GHC increase.
GHC increase, okay.
So, unfortunately, the impact, if things are status quo, those that are on the Dean plan would experience a pretty significant increase in out-of-pocket costs. So, this chart shows both plans, single and family, the current annual premium in the first column, then the renewal based on a status quo, the increase and the percent Based on that, we really wanted to vet some different options on our long-range strategy as I discussed earlier. And we asked several other providers if this, if they could meet these criteria. We wanted a proven, customized, integrated district clinic model in the area, sustainable, high-deductible HSA plan to promote that consumerism and integrate with our clinic, improve reporting so that we could provide more focused customization based on what our population health is showing us. And then similar in-network pricing and slash no-cost increase as we want to get to our long-term strategy of transitioning from-
Recording in progress.
From HMO pricing to self-funded. And other carriers conceded that they could not deliver these criteria. Many, if we would move to self-funding, other carriers would charge us higher costs to access their network. So, Dean was the only carrier that would provide same cost. And that's our, you know, long-term strategy. That was one of the reasons for the proposal. The proposal is moving to a single carrier, Dean, with a high-deductible health plan, 3,000, single, 6,000, family. The district would contribute 2,300, single, 4,600, family to that health savings account. And we'd also establish a clinic in partnership with Dean that's dedicated to our population-only. Again, talking about that access to care. The premiums compared to the renewal are as follows, same, similar chart, different plans. The left column is what the renewal would have been. The proposed high-deductible annual premium by Dean is on that third column, and then the difference from the renewal to the premium. So, you see that the Dean offers a substantial decrease for those members on the Dean plan. And even a decrease, a slight decrease for GHC as well. The comparison of the deductible and out-of-pocket impact to staff are these charts. The top chart is our current deductible, single and family. You'll see 200, 400. The proposed deductible is 3,000, 6,000. The district contribution of 2,300, 4,600 gives, would give us a net deductible of 700 per single. So, it's the difference between 3,000 and 2,300, and 1,400 for family, the difference between 6,000 and what the district would give, the 4,600. And then the difference between, you know, the current deductible of $200 and the proposed of 7 is a $500 difference, basically, in deductible and 1,000 per family. We're going to follow that. So, currently, they're paying 200, 400. If the deductible's 3,000, 6,000, but the district's giving money towards that HSA. The net change there, the deductible that they'd have to pay out-of-pocket is 700, 1,400. And then the difference between that 700 and 200 is 5, 500, and 1,400 and 4 is 1,000. From an out-of-pocket, max-out-of-pocket perspective, current plan right now is 6,600, single and 13,200, family. The proposed is, once you hit deductible, you're done and everything is free. So, our current plan, once you hit deductible, you're paying $150 every time you go to the emergency room or urgent care, all your prescriptions, until you hit the 6,600 or 13,200. So, this chart shows the change, so the premium change from the renewal. That was the first slide. The net change in deductible at 5,000, or 500, 1,000, and then the total change from that. So, GHC, it's $414, single, more than what the renewal was, and for family, it's $711 more. And the Dean is, you know, 458 and $705 less. The right-hand column, I'm just showing the difference between the out-of-cost max. You can't really predict, you know, not everyone is going to go up to the deductible. Some people don't, you know, only go to preventative visits and don't even, you know, use deductible. So, there's a, there's varying, you know, differences, obviously, by individuals, but just wanted to highlight that there is a decrease in the out-of-pocket max. The rationale for the proposed plan is it takes $2 million of our premium that we have been giving to insurance companies, and we're going to put it in the hands of our employees. So, giving our employees that cash in hand, it's their money. It's put into a health savings account. You can only have a health savings account if you have a high-deductible health plan. Employees can put their own money in pre-tax via payroll deduction into a health savings account as well to either pay for additional, you know, that out-of-pocket spread that's still there, or to save money. That money rolls over from year to year. There's investment vehicles that they can invest those funds in, and it can grow over time and it can become a retirement savings account, so to speak, for you. Also gives greater access to preventative care and lower costs. So, we talk about the clinic. It's, you know, available for acute care for $20 per visit. Right now, if you had a sinus infection or something like that and wanted, needed to go to, in urgent care, that would be hundreds of dollars, or your doctor. This clinic would offer that access to staff for low cost and free labs. So, even if employees wanted to go to their same primary doctor, they still could, but their doctor wanted some labs run. They could have those labs done at the clinic. It would be free to them instead of paying hundreds of dollars for, you know, the labs that their doctor would prescribe. As I said, in our strategy, we want to change that focus from sick care to wellness care and having a devoted, dedicated provider that's in our clinic. That person really gets to know our employees and their families very well. And from my own experience, it was very beneficial for our staff, to the point of our staff didn't want to leave the district because that was such a huge benefit to them. Really easy to get your kids in if they had, you know, an illness, if they needed a sports physical. There was just a lot of benefits to having that clinic. And this provides us the ability to shift to that self-funded plan. Consolidation of the carrier provides for better reporting for population health. Right now, having the two, it's really hard to get consolidated reporting to really understand what our population health is and what they need. And it provides more stability. We heard a lot of people talk about the different changes, you know, having that dual option, switching to court, switching to GHC, and heading in this direction. That long-term strategy is for more stability. Dean was the only carrier that offers the same pricing to fully insured versus self-funded plans. And they do have a more expansive HMO network, in-network. I just wanted to show the map here. So, this is Dean's footprint when it comes to the area. It's 19 counties. And then GHC's is eight. So, from a footprint perspective, it covers more area. So, we talk about the district contribution, 2,300, 4,600 to an HSA. The proposal is to make those contributions quarterly, late January, early February, April, July, and October, so that those new hires in the fall will have some. And you also, you know, don't want to prepay all of it upfront because of cash flow issues for the district, number one. And number two, if someone leaves the district, they get $4,600 and they leave, that wouldn't be wise either. So, we do have a plan in place that would be able to have people that have high prescription costs, they could apply for an accelerated HSA payment that would have the ability to cover that concern and that need and not, obviously, impact the district from a cash flow perspective. So, it's, you know, balancing those that need it versus the district's cash flow.
Excuse me. Does that only apply to prescriptions or could it-
Yeah. The reason it only applies to prescriptions is that for procedures, you can set up a payment plan with different providers so that you can, as you get those HSA funds in, you can make those payments. You can't do the same thing with prescriptions.
Okay.
Wanted to give the board an idea of the HSA contribution amount impact. The proposal is that 2,300, 4,600 in the middle. It's not quite zero, but I wanted to put the amount there. 2,500, 5,000 would be about $173,000. We also are proposing a family reimbursement account. This would be for current employees currently enrolled in the health plan. The district would reimburse out-of-pocket in-network costs up to, if you're single and you're going to waive insurance, 5,000 a year. If you're a family going to single, 5,000 a year. And if you're a family waiving insurance totally, 10,000 a year. And in addition, there would be a cash payment through payroll, which would be taxable. $50 a month for single or family going to single and $100 a month for family waiving insurance. This isn't something that we were considering a cash-in lieu of. Cash-in lieu is typically, you know, those, those that potentially don't have a lot of need for health care and those are the people you want to continue on your plan and actually would end up with a negative situation for the district. This would, is, you know, intended to provide an alternative if, you know, someone has a spouse that has access to UW or, you know, another provider, it, but it's really expensive. It provides some support for them to make that change. So, that's really the intent behind this. It isn't intended to be a cash-in lieu benefit. From a benchmark perspective, the trend in the area is towards a high-deductible health plan, which, with an HSA and a district-dedicated clinic. There's 15 other districts that have these with an employee clinic. And we talked about, you know, staff, worrying about staff leaving. There's just not a lot of options, a lot of districts around that have the dual choice because it is not sustainable. So, you know, we don't want to lose employees. We want to be competitive. We think this is a competitive offering that will help us in the long term. There are additional comparable data points in board docs if you wanted to see all of the districts and their offerings and their premiums and all of that good stuff. There are other options to staff. The proposed plan was, is basically our, you know, lowest-cost plan for staff. We do, and we will still have, a point-of-service plan that would provide access to non-network partners. There would be more cost to it, but there certainly is that option there with a higher premium and a lower HSA contribution because of the cost. There is also a traditional plan, again, a higher premium, 200, 400 deductible, but no HSA, and there's copays involved. So, there are options. We heard a lot about transition of care and, you know, some, some people that had to transition from courts to GHC are still waiting to get in to see a physician. And, you know, the question is, well, what if I have a doctor appointment in January, already set up, and I've been waiting for a year? Dean does have a continuity of care process to assist employees that are in an active course of treatment or have an appointment within 90 days of that first January 1 date. And we have a direct email to Kristin Niti, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly, that can help with that process. And there's also a pharmacy continuity of care plan. We have our Board of Education meeting on Monday. It's virtual. We will offer virtual one-on-ones to staff for questions and answers for individual concerns. There are several videos of prior presentations, FAQs, brain sharks, benefit summaries, all on the district website, with open enrollment happening from November 4th to the 18th. We also have some Dean representatives here that can answer some questions, and we have our broker, USI, Al Yeager.
Sure. Al Yeager.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Al Yeager, USI Independent Advisor in terms of the benefit scenarios, work with a lot of area districts. And who was invited was Dr. Ottenbaker, Sandy Cowan, and Mike Weber. They represent different pieces of the equation in what was presented. Dr. Ottenbaker from the SSM standpoint and leadership from the, call it the, you know, SSM. You have Sandy Cowan, who is a clinic manager. She's been involved, when Kristin described having 15 area districts that started up a clinic model. This goes back six-plus years where she was initiating and creating that effective model, so she would be the clinic manager and getting something like that off the ground. And then Mike Weber represents the insurance arm of the equation. And all there, here for answering questions.
I have to comment and then some questions. I don't know if you'll be able to answer them or not, but I'm going to ask them. My comment about HSAs is I could not disagree more with an HSA. I think they are, they might work well for some people, but they do not work well for people who are less healthy, who have higher healthcare costs, low-income people. Often, those HSAs will be spent very fast. They'll have continuing costs that will go on. And the fact that you say that there's a payment option, just, I cringe at that, having to think that somebody with a pre-existing condition or a chronic health condition might have to worry about a payment option because they exhaust their HSA. So, I don't see HSAs like you see them. Okay? I think there's holes there, and that's where they lie, in my experience and in the experience of constituents that I've talked with directly. We heard some tonight, right? I have a question for the Dean people, and I don't want to ask specifics if you don't know, so I'll just ask. There's somebody that talked to me that has high-cost medications. And if I were to give you a couple of those high-cost medications, would you know if they're covered or not?
Yes.
Does Dean cover Tricafta?
No. I don't know specifically.
Okay. That's, that's a high-cost medication for people with cystic fibrosis. It's very expensive. And once they're on it, they need to continue that. Very high cost. What about, like- What about, like, asthma allergy shots like Zolair, Nucala?
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to answer.
Okay, that's fine. No, no problem. I think that's one of the issue, the concerns, right? We have people...
I responded.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
Well, first, first of all, I have to make a comment. So I'm Mike Weber, been at Dean Health Plan 26 years. I've worked with a lot of different school districts. And I want to say an appreciation and I want to thank your speakers who presented to you today on behalf of your, the teachers, the people, the support. I think that takes real courage for them to do that. So I just want to start out this conversation by saying the culture of your school district is healthy, that they're able to do this. So I just, whatever decision you make, I, I think it's really important because I, very powerful comments, and I know that's not easy to do. Our intent, though, is to answer your question, how we do this. And I apologize, I'm not a physician and I'm not a pharmacist.
It's okay. It's okay.
But, but really, what you're asking is almost exactly, the number-one benefit that people use is prescriptions. It is the first thing that people will use January 1st. So it is an incredibly important thing that we address. What we do, how do we do this? To answer the question, it's not, Chris, you were very close, it's Chris Sinetti is the name. But really, what we do is you'll get an email, the individuals, any staff member that's part of the GHC plan will be able to have a one-on-one meeting with a representative from the health plan and walk through all of their prescriptions, any transition of care issues that they have. We have what's called a welcome center, and that's tied in with our physician clinical leadership of SSM. And so if there's appointments, if there's specialty care, gender-affirming care, any questions like that, those questions will be answered individually with those, those individuals. So they will know in advance what's covered, what isn't covered. And then they'll also know that if there's, because we have, we have very robust coverage for, and I know it came up a lot today, gender-affirming care. But there are some benefits that we do not do within the SSM system, although many of our providers treat many individuals with different types of questions about different diagnoses. If they're unable to do that, then they will be referred out to either UW, Medical College of Wisconsin, or other providers. But I want the group to know that our intent, what, what strikes me about this, this presentation is that what we really are offering you is a long-term solution. We really, we want to earn the trust of the people that will make the change again, and I heard it, I was listening as much as I possibly could, people that have gone through this three or four times. So there's an appreciation of that. So whatever decision the board makes or the leadership here makes, we want your employees and their families to be eyes wide open whenever they make the decision going that, including prescription drugs.
Well, Philip, I have a follow-up to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a follow-up on your follow-up too, Eric.
All right, can I go first?
Yeah, of course.
I wonder if you understand the gravity of somebody changing insurance with a chronic disease or cancer or a life-threatening medical thing that they have to have medication on a daily basis? I can tell you, because I've talked to people in this district, employees in this district, that they've been through that. And there's one person I talked to that because the change took two weeks, their child ended up in the hospital. So that happens. That's serious. So to say, yeah, we're going to talk to them, we're going to provide them with medications that, they don't, you don't, they don't know that. You don't even know that. You, I asked you about three drugs. I didn't, I wasn't doing that to, you know, do a gotcha thing. I was just curious. And as an example, like, we don't know. So we've got to go check, right? When you've got to go check and you have somebody that needs those drugs, that takes time. And they don't have time because they need them immediately. And that causes a disruption, not only for the individual with a health concern, but the family and our employee. So that concerns me. I've, you know, I, because I have one more question, and then I'm done. I would just ask about one more procedure, because I'm curious if you cover it. Again, something that came up from my constituents. Would you cover something like a fetal reduction abortion? Well, it's a procedure for a woman that would need that, you know, based on your consultation with their doctor. I'm not a doctor, so I can't go into it.
I know that, I know the plan, again, without being, I don't want to, I don't want to give specifics if, if, if I don't have full breadth of knowledge of it. But it's, the way the plan is worked right now, which is very similar to the GHC plan that you currently have, the documents, the life of the child, life of the parent, incest, rape, severe deformity of the child, those are all covered benefits. They may not be, and again, I don't know if this applies in this.
But I, I think that's, the question is, you don't know. We don't know. We don't know.
No, but, but I don't, first of all, I want to comment about something you said. I don't take, I, 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 I hope I'm not coming across flippant or...
No, 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 no.
That is the last thing I want to do. If, if at the end of this conversation, you stay with your existing plans because of whatever the needs are for the district, I 100% respect that. But I take this very, very seriously. And to those individuals that have questions, that feel strongly, I will personally, I'll leave my, my business card with you and they can send a Chris Sinetti email to whoever. And, and because I have gone through this a lot, there is nothing that I want more than this goes smoothly. Will it be a perfect transition? Absolutely not with, I mean, it's not going to be perfect, perfect. But are we going to do everything in our power to make sure the transition for these employees is positive? And I will also make it so that these individuals that have come and spoken to you, if they feel comfortable, because a lot of times people don't, we will give them the, the answers to those questions in detail. And then they, he or she can share those back with you. Because I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I really do. And this is a hard decision. You are all in a, I've got great, my mom, I was saying to the young lady who spoke, what an impressive job she did. My mom was the president of a school board. I was married to a teacher for 30 years. What you do is, is hard decisions. But I, I also, my intent to hear tonight is to, to be upfront with you, to look you in the eye, give you comments, but then also allow you to get any additional feedback that you need as a board to make the right decision for your district.
I appreciate that, but you haven't given me the information that I need to make a decision, so.
Well, that's, and I, and I 100% agree.
Elizabeth, I think you were waiting to go next.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up on what Eric said. And sorry, were, Kristen, were you and other folks out of the room during most of the meeting today?
We were listening from the...
Okay. I just want to explain my weird disembodied voice, but I don't have to, so that's okay. I wanted to follow up on a question that Eric asked, which I think is a, a good one around sort of this idea of continuity of care. And I will say, as a person who has been forced to bounce around to various insurance providers, it's, it's awful, right? The mental load and the emotional load of like finding people is not, is not great. And I've personally never been offered a concierge service, so it's an interesting concept to me. I think a wondering that I have is this idea of like, I can sit down with someone, right, and have an individual meeting where I go, look, here's all the things that I've got going for me, right? Here are my medications, here are my specialists, here are the things that I need. And that person's going to help me figure out, you know, yes, you can keep your current provider because that's outside of the scope of what a SSM provider would provide, right? So yep, we're good there. Or here are your prescriptions. Is there a way for that conversation to happen prior to enrolling? Because my concern is, folks are going to have to make a decision around whether or not they want to stand our plan. Should we go this way? Or if they want to jump to like a partner's plan, for example, for those that have that choice. And I feel like it's a hard, informed choice to make if you aren't able to get that information ahead of time. Because now you've sort of locked yourself into something, you find out after the fact that those things aren't covered or aren't available, you're now not in a qualified reason to switch to another insurance provider, like your, your spouses or your partners, and you're sort of stuck in this spot. And so kind of curious about the timing, particularly for those that we know have, you know, high cost, high need, hard-to-access kinds of care.
Well, okay, yeah. First of all, absolutely great question, 100% agree. Now, I apologize with the time, so I, to my, my, my colleagues here, the timing of this, but I, again, I want to be really transparent with all of you. The intent of this is to have those meetings as quick as possible. I believe we have signup sheets already being developed so that individuals like that can have those individual meetings.
Yeah, but I think Elizabeth's question is, but before Monday. Or when, did she say, before when?
For open enrollment.
Have we voted, we have not voted on this yet. So, so why are there signup sheets? What are the signup sheets for?
So...
If there, if there's individual questions that people have.
Oh, about...
Just, just like, exactly, exactly like...
Okay. So those are the 20, what was the date? 21st?
21st.
23rd? 23rd or 21st, one of those two dates. So in last count, I want to say it was over 20 individuals that had signed up. And each of them have the opportunity to go through exactly, I mean, the intention behind it was, you know, their specific prescriptions or their specific health conditions. Because in the event that they're not comfortable with the transition to care within the H4 walls of the, the network of the Dean, they, they can either do one of a couple of things as Elizabeth had asked, one of which would be, well, do I take the point-of-service plan? Because point-of-service does have an out-of-network. Or do I enroll if, you know, your example, Elizabeth, was if I have a spouse that has coverage, do I enroll with my spouse's plan? But they would, that would be, that's the intent behind that signup, and that's the intent behind that review, whether it's prescriptions, whether it's medical situation specifically.
Yeah, the intent is...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I just have one more follow-up question around, around prescriptions in general. So I, I appreciate that response around specifics, because I think it's really important, should the board decide to move this direction, that folks have the ability, prior to having to choose, to be able to sit down and go, what am I walking into on January 1, so that I can make the most informed decision possible? Second question I have is off of Eric's question, is around prescriptions. And so, I mean, I know that there are like standard retail costs for standard prescriptions, right? Like, I gave this example to someone earlier, like levothyroxine, I could have a $10 copay on prescriptions, it cost me $10. It also costs me $10 without insurance, right? Like, that's just, that's the price of that, that drug. And I'm curious to know if Dean has a publicly available list or a list that would be available to our staff around sort of standard market prices for, particularly for common, commonly-used drugs that we know folks are on, right? Statins, blood pressure medications, SSRIs, right? There's a, there's kind of a, I would imagine there's like a list of, of top 20 medications. And is, is that available for folks?
I apologize for saying this again. Don't know, but I think that's a great question. And the reason it's coming up more and more is because there's all these pharmaceutical companies coming up with, Mark Cuban's company where it's basically the generics are a certain price. But I'll, I will follow up on that to see if that is available. And then also what your price would be if the price is actually less than the copay.
Right. Yep, yeah, which I know in some cases it is. And then also, to the extent that you can, as I understand it, larger pharmacy agencies, your CVSs, your Walgreens, for example, negotiate potentially different rates than maybe your local pharmacy. And the extent to which that matters as well, I think, would, would be important for folks.
Elizabeth, real quick, there was a distributed list of which prescriptions are free. There was a list of, and method to get that information. Chris Sinetti, the individual that was mentioned, he was intending to be here tonight. Situation occurred that he's not able to. Regardless, he had, that's part of the communication and information that has been distributed. But I, you know, the specific examples that were asked from Eric, as well as the specific details of what has been set up for affording that information, we'll follow up with the, you know, a summary email coordinating with the folks at Dean to make sure you have specifically that.
Great, thanks, Al. I have more questions, Philip, but those are my follow-up on Eric. So I'll mute myself so other folks have an opportunity to ask questions.
All right, yeah, we'll swing back to Susan, and then I see Rochelle, too. Sorry, I didn't, didn't catch either of you before the other, but Susan first and then Rochelle.
Thank you very much. I have several questions, but I'll start with just a couple and then we can move on to others. But one of my really serious and major concerns is access to what you may call specialized healthcare services. And I think an example is mental health services for school-aged children specifically. And when Meriter built the Children's Adolescent Psych Facility, SSM refused to join, and UW refused to join. When Meriter and UW partnered, then that became an accessible site for those people. And again, Dr. Schmidt can tell you as medical director what they have available, which right now is effectively no beds. So that apparent lack of support or assistance and funding from SSM, it's been my impression as a review of healthcare services, that there isn't direct access from your system to inpatient mental health care at the Children's Adolescent Psych Facility. Is that incorrect?
You talking about Meriter specifically?
I'm, if a, if a child made an attempt to commit suicide and showed traumatic depression...
He needs to be inpatient?
And needed inpatient services, how would, how would SSM service that?
You worry about a close call to Rogers?
You would what?
You worry about a close call to Rogers?
So you would, and would you tell the, the board here where Rogers is located?
It's in...
Milwaukee. It's in Milwaukee. So I have a seven-year-old child that tried to commit suicide, that instead of being in our facility where you can be with them, they would be transported to Rogers. So one of my major concerns, this is just an example of a major concern, and that's access to higher health ser, highly-specialized healthcare services, trauma surgery. You had actually a trauma surgeon, and several of that trauma surgeon's parents leave your clinic facility and form their own group due to their concerns of how they were structured in that environment. So that makes me nervous about, one, your ability to retain high, high special, specialty, particular surgical services. Right now, it's my understanding, from my healthcare background, that the only surgical transgender services are available at the university hospital. And it's my understanding that there's been serious difficulty... And it's my understanding that there's been serious difficulties with getting referrals from the SSM system to those services. And I think that's another clear major concern, is getting the actual referral. And then the provision of care occurs, but it's not at that same level of experience in specialized surgical services. So I look at mental health, trauma surgery, reproductive surgery, and transgender surgery and treatment as just areas that, with my review processes, I've identified. And I also have had significant experiences with individuals who have been receiving oncological cancer treatments, who needed a higher level of care and weren't referred out specifically. And this woman was a nurse, so she knew where that service was provided and what, and had a very good feel for what, what she knew. So one of my concerns is access to high-level care.
If you don't, if you don't mind, there's, I think, a distinction we need to make. And Mike, one of the things, if you don't mind just speak to, there's the insurance arm, and then there's the provider arm. And when we talk about each of, each of these items categorically, Mike, I mean, for the most part, when you speak to her, your questions specifically, and I just want to make sure you're all equipped with the facts or details.
I'm, we're talking about, Al, we're talking about sending over 200 people to change their insurance and their access to healthcare. That insurance change changes them from group health, which does provide a pathway, to our university setting. That is not as clear a pathway through your extremely highly deductible HMO. On top of that, if a goal is an HSA for retirees, when they reach Medicare, they aren't allowed to participate in an A, in an S, HSA. And in fact, if they aren't in, if they choose dean choice, they can't participate in the HSA. So that as a goal or a strategy is, may be very limited in relation to the services that are provided through the SSM system.
Well, there's quite a few things in there. First of all, what I wanted to capture first and foremost is, when you're talking about the SSM referral, that's under the guise that they start with SSM as to where they're seeking their care, right? My point is, just for Mike to speak to, making sure everyone's understanding the difference between the health plan and the providers, because of the list of providers, Mike, I think you may have brought a list of them, just so that, you know, SSM represents on that list six out of the different, I don't know what else there are listed, from hospitals, clinics throughout your network, but.
You could make that available to the board and the staff. That would be helpful.
That was, is up on the screen right now, what Kristen has up on the screen right now.
Those are locations. I'm talking about level of care. That's, that's very different for me.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Rochelle.
You're right, Rochelle.
So I just, I have some questions. Some of them have been answered, but I do want to say, I mean, especially for staff, this is super emotional, and your health is something that, I understand the struggle. And so I, I, it's hard, and I understand, and I'm, I'm sorry, we're possibly switching something that you've gotten comfortable with. So just know that none of these decisions are easy, either way we go. But a few of them, the questions, so I think you've kind of answered the gender-affirming care, but I think probably finding out a little bit more that individuals maybe can explore and see how comfortable they are with those options would be really helpful. And just kind of curious about the difference between max out-of-pocket costs and deductibles? Are those different or the same?
They're different. So, once you hit deductible with the current plan, there, the max, you'll pay, continue to pay those copays until you hit that max out-of-pocket. So you'll see the, the current deductible is 200, 400, and the out-of-pocket's on the bottom there, it's 6,600 and 13,200. So once you hit the, for example, family 400, if you go to urgent care, if you go to the emergency room, if you have, need a MRI, you're going to pay copays and your prescription copays until you get to that 13,200.
So that's with the current plan?
That's with the current plan. And so the, the difference in, you know, the total exposure or out-of-pocket more is that $500, $1,000. So if, if there's a person or family that has, you know, $100,000 worth of expenditures, the most that they'll pay, more than they're paying now, is $500 single, $1,000 family. So that's the maximum additional exposure from the high deductible plan.
Okay. I feel like it's a little bit brain gymnastics.
Yeah. And, and the, the out-of-pocket max and the, the deductible for the high deductible plan are the same. So it's, for that plan, it's, they're the exact same. So once you hit deductible, you're done, if you're going that work.
Okay, okay. I've got a few more, if I can keep rolling. Is that okay? Okay. So if we do get a clinic, well, if we do go with this plan, there will be a clinic that you're saying? Can you tell me a little bit about what you're thinking of for a clinic?
Although, we'll have a dedicated provider, most likely a PA or a nurse practitioner that would be in the clinic. Obviously, it takes some time to establish that and a location. Most likely, it'll be a near-site clinic, because I don't know that, right now, we have a, a facility that we'd want to put an investment in without having a, more of a, a long-term strategy with the properties we have. We've talked about a transition in January and February, before we could have a clinic in the, the March-ish timeframe with a, a near-site, being in one of our buildings, you know, identified potentially Maywood being a, it has that nurse room, and then there's a kindergarten classroom that has a sink and a bathroom, and having a part-time person be able to, to service that, or we're looking at another dean location, could that be our, our clinic until we can get ours up and running, because there's construction, we have to hire all that stuff?
And then what about mental health care? Would there be any possibility of having access to that?
So we're also having conversations with dean about the possibility of that, and...
Yes, sure. So I can speak a little bit more about the clinic. So Kristen's done a great job of talking about the clinic. The, the wellness clinic is not there to replace your, your primary care relationship at all. They're not there to replace your PCP. We use a full Epic record, so if you were to go to the clinic for your physical, or you went for, with your child for an ear infection or something, we have the ability, through Epic Care everywhere, to blow in, if you will, at that visit, all of your records from GHC or UW or wherever you are, so we can see all your meds, all your labs, et cetera. We don't have to duplicate those to care for you, whatever you're there for. That provider, typically a nurse practitioner, a nurse who starts interim bridge part-time, we're working on January 1st, but dedicated to you when you're, got your clinic fully running, are also there for your transition. Transition to care is not easy. It is not easy to go from one healthcare system to another, but that dedicated care team, which we all talked about, are yours. They only service your employees and your families, that's it. That is their panel. They don't see anybody else, so you get to know them. They advocate for you, they call the UW for you, talk to your providers, they call the dermatologist that they want you to see for that rash within SSM or whomever, and, and have those internal relationships. They navigate and advocate for your care for you. They also see you for acute care and primary care, and they have that deep bench, if you will, of services and specialists within our system. They're, they are, are well, especially the bridge, the, the, the one who's going to get us through the January, February that we have planned, if this should go through, is really well-versed in mental health. Our, all of our providers, we have 41 clients with over 20 clinics right now in a lot of school districts. All of our providers and our employer programs meet with our specialty providers, the head of the psychiatry department, and they have webinars on depression and anxiety meds and how to treat that through primary care. We also have the same resources that primary care does in SSM with virtual behavioral health. So if someone presents in crisis, we can immediately put them on a virtual, in, in a private room with virtual care, to a therapist and counselor for immediate care. We have immediate access to a psychiatrist if that is needed, and then we have those internal resources for referrals into the system to get them further care as they need it. If there's, you know, they, they also have all that comes along with the Epic record in being able to prescribe the generic medications, if you will, or what tests to order and, and all that advocacy. Where, if you're talking about long-term strategy, that keeps going through my head, getting over that very challenging, emotional, difficult transition, how to get to that preventative care, we have our own reporting analyst that does all of your reporting and analytics for the population that we serve in your population health. We have reduced in our, in those populations, A1Cs by 16% for diabetics. We've reduced hypertension by 39% of, of the groups of, that we take care of. We follow the same procedures that the SSM Health System does, who's number one in Wisconsin for controlling hypertension and depression screenings. We, we engage your, your families and your members who don't come in for those cancer screenings, so that they don't get complex cancers, and we bring them in for colonoscopies, and we bring them in and, and get, make sure their mammograms are scheduled and get their path tests, et cetera. We engage the unengaged. So having a wellness clinic like this, who are advocates for all your members, so that they don't get to that crisis situation and have complex cancer and are suicidal, that's going to happen, of course. We reverse diabetes in our lifestyle coaching classes, but the amount of focus that they're going to put on your members and their families to make them healthier, because we're going to use the data from your claims, and we're going to look and see how much asthma there is, and they're, we're going to look and see how much diabetes there is or high cholesterol, and we're going to focus our efforts that truly our primary care teams just don't have the time to do. You're going to invest in a clinic, in a wellness team, that's going to focus on your families to make them better and more well, along with and very collaboratively with their primary care people, whether they're at GHC, or whether they're, they were at UW, or whether they're at dean. We work very collaboratively with those primary care teams and with the specialists. If they go away for a hip replacement, or they go away for a stent, we're going to watch that procedure, we're going to watch the follow-up, and they come back to the wellness clinic and get those follow-up visits. We're going to make sure they take those medications and be compliant. So there's so much that goes along with a wellness clinic that is a, a huge benefit. And you talked long-term strategy, getting on that other side of that, and start to see those population health metrics improve, and your total cost of care go down, and your utilization of care go down, and your healthcare costs go down, is, is why we're having this discussion today.
Could, could you tell us about your Middleton Clinic, your Middleton Wellness Clinic? In specifics, please? Because we've gotten pretty negative feedback, and they, my understanding is that the Middleton School District has in fact self-staffed that clinic because of the inadequacies provided to them. So maybe you could provide us with what the, what the reality of that is?
So you're, she's referencing that, this, you are an independent clinic that is part of the equation. So that's what you represent, and I think what Susan's referencing is, that's separate from the health plan itself. So when she says self-staffed, the, the concern, I think, that was expressed was, without the clinic that you're describing and that you're offering, there was frustration, especially during the, you know, the transition that Middleton went through, there was some frustration and especially exasperated during the timing of it, the pandemic, et cetera, that made it even worse. But to answer Susan's question, you want to speak to the experience of the clinic that's set up to mitigate and address those concerns, what the experience has been?
So you're speaking of the clinic that opened in January of this year?
Correct.
At, at the elementary school in that separate building, their new wellness clinic, that is staffed with a nurse practitioner and RN. So you're hearing negative things about that?
My understanding that the staffing of that facility was a significant concern to the school district, and they then hired the people to staff that clinic.
They hired you guys to do the staffing?
Oh, so SSM know that works.
So you want to speak to that, I mean, just to be clarified?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't want any mistruths out there. So we had a really rough transition going to dean only in the Middleton School District. The first board report we got after one year was horrific. So what was offered was a balm of a clinic onsite. We were fortunate to have a building outside one of our elementary schools that we had used as an overflow classroom some years back, and we converted it to a clinic. It's beautiful. I cut the ribbon on the grand opening. It's a gorgeous facility. Why it works is, one, our providers out there from dean are amazing women who will start early, work through their lunch hour, work late in the day, add hours, we just added additional hours. What Susan's referring to is we have a full-time wellness coordinator, and I think the other reason that clinic works is because our wellness coordinator is making sure that that clinic is functioning really well. If it weren't for that clinic, I think we'd be in much worse shape with being dean only. That clinic has taken care of much of the things you're talking about, a strep throat, a sinus infection, a kid needs an athletic facility, somebody has a migraine. They're working our staff into that beautifully. If they didn't have that option, access was really, really tough. And what I couldn't disclose when I spoke, Eric, is that as board president, I get the unfortunate emails of the kinds of distress our people are in due to access outside of their really great experience in the clinic. When the clinic can't serve that need, then there's some really hard stories. You know, confidentially, obviously, that's not something I can talk about, but it's hard to read those and to hear that. Our clinic is the balm, the say-of, that in year two brought down the fever of access. And our wellness clinics are managed by a clinic manager. We, in 2018, SSM realized that employers needed a service line through our company that was different from clinic operations, so they asked that a program, SSM Health at Work, be developed, and our entire team, all the way up through our vice president, serves employer needs. And so that's where we run the employer clinics and the wellness clinics collaboratively with our, our primary care and our specialty group and the medical group clinics, but we are an employer solutions group that hire nurse practitioners, RNs, I'm one of their project managers, but we have clinic managers who run and manage those clinics in collaboration with a wellness coordinator, if the school or employer has their own, but if you don't, we manage the clinic. The staff is our, is our staff, and they, they work for SSM Health. The staff is our staff, and they work for SSM Health. We are very, we recognize and respect patient privacy. The employer does not see any records or anything that goes on in the clinic. It's like a mini SSM clinic, whether it's onsite or nearsite, et cetera, but we provide the full scope of services through the wellness clinic. It's just kind of a different.
Susan.
Thank you so much for that information. Thank you very, very much. That's very, very helpful to have.
I want to bring, I want to bring it back over here. First of all, Rochelle, did you get?
I just had a couple of other thoughts.
Because I'm sure Peter has a chance, too.
That's okay. I don't want to dominate. But one thing that might be a nice idea, that if we did go with this model, if we could take some staff PPE hours to help trans, get them all set up with their new, kind of set up their new plans with, you know, to get, instead of trying to take time, if, I don't know the concierge person that will help them move their appointments to a new healthcare plan, if they're available after hours, but with our staff working from, you know, whenever they get here at 7:00, 7:30, until often not leaving till 4:00, 4:30, is there something that we could offer to help them be able to have time to make those calls and make those connections? Might be some food for thought. I don't, you don't need to answer now, but for, to soften some of these big, big changes that may be in the air. And then what's this, have we done any staff surveys on, who currently have Dean, and how comfortable they've been with using them? Because we have almost half of our staff already utilizing Dean. Do you guys know the?
So.
What?
Yeah, do you know it?
So there's been, every year, there's surveys that are done, and of those surveys, you know, top of my head, I'm going to guess, in the greater Dane County area, anywhere from 10 to 15 different districts that participate. And from a satisfaction level, there's a delineation between the different health systems, and all, the collective districts have done for the last 20 years is, you know, shared a lot of data with each other. What's going well, what's not going well? Who's doing prescriptions well? Who's doing all the different categories well, and who's not? And meanwhile, you know, other than, as Sheila indicated, during the transition year, specifically at Middleton, I can tell you that the membership count, and I can even share those numbers, has been quite high, and part of what SSM had asked Dr. Weiner from an area school district to speak to, because he spearheaded a lot of those, he's the one spearheading a lot of those surveys, was to speak to that, not only that satisfaction level, which he identified in the over 90, 95% category, but also to speak to, from an HSA approach. And I totally appreciate Eric's comment about HSA concerns, because traditionally, HSA products in the private sector aren't ceded. The only money that's put into it in that sector are employee funds, and as a result, it becomes woefully low. And his point that he has made in the global effort has been, we're ceding a significant dollar amount to the point that that's not the case, and the examples that are being shared by area districts, their average balance over the four or five-year period of time, their average balances are greater than the deductible levels, so they have more funds than what the balances are, what the case studies are demonstrating. So this isn't, you know, this isn't something that just came out of the blue, it's some different examples, and I recognize and respect all the sensitivities, but I also need to be completely, you know, forthright with you, there's success stories as well, as, you know, as well as the negatives that you hear from the private sector examples.
Well, I'm just wondering, though, just in general, what are staff, how they feel about their Dean insurance that they've had for the last year or two, and if they're feeling comfortable and that it's been easy to access and they've been getting good care?
I don't have a specific survey from within.
Our district?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Real quick on that, so I've talked to maybe 40 people and got another 60-some emails. Out of all of those 100 or so people, not one person has said, "Great, I love Dean, it's doing so well for me, please keep it," or "make sure it's part of," not one. So I would love to see a survey of our staff to not only see what they think of the current members that are in Dean Health, but also if the members that are not in Dean Health would be willing to pay an increase to keep what they have. I would like to see that survey to our staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things was, I think, because in any proposal, Dean was never off the table, so we never heard from anybody that was concerned about losing Dean, because it was always there.
Sure.
I can tell you, since I've been here for 99 days, that the majority, I haven't heard anything negative about Dean, everything we've heard has been about GHC.
Peter.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for putting this, this is a real hard thing to do, really hard thing to do. There's, now, putting this proposal together, it, thank you, it's a difficult thing, it's tough, we need, we need, we work on health here every year, we need to work on it all the time, because it's perennially a problem for the district. We can't, unsustainable issue for the district. So we do always have to keep looking for it, and I appreciate that we have this proposal in front of us. I know, I would note that if you have a Dean under our current plan, if you have the Dean Health Plan, you're going to see a big increase, all of our staff who have the Dean Healthcare next year, unless we do something different. So, you know, we've got to remember, keep those things in play. As terms of the quality of care, I've been receiving care for SS, from SSM Health, from through Dean, I joined with Dean before it was SSM Health, and I have received, and really, the care is, these organizations, they, there's a lot of things going on in the care, and they all offer, do things, some things better than others. I've had excellent care from Dean, I've had doctors I prefer not from SSM Health, I prefer, would not, would not have had those interactions with those doctors, but it's been good and bad, and I've heard the same things about GHC as this. I, couple of questions, though. Can we look at page 17 of the presentation? As I go through and read this, there'll be a big difference in that the maximum out-of-pocket for all of our employees will be substantially less under this proposal than what we currently have. Is that correct? Because we were talking about deductibles, and, but when you, by the time you put the HSA on top of it, that is, that's correct, that these maximum out-of-pocket will be much less, correct?
Yes.
And as I see it, there will be a small number of employees who sort of fall in the donut hole, where they might see an increased out-of-pocket cost compared, their total cost might be a little large, and that is when they exceed our, before they hit the, if they don't go well into the max out-of-pocket, or, I'm sorry, the max deductible, and they, but they are in the high above what we contribute to the HSA, there'll be, and I'm kind of curious, in that range, there'll be some people who will see a higher total cost. And I'm kind of curious, does anybody know, with our current plan, what percentage of, or actually, I'm sorry, with high deductible plans, what percentage of people actually hit those high deductibles? Hit the limit of their deductible? Anybody know statistics, what the statistics are on that?
I can confirm the numbers, but over the past, it's less than a third. It might be closer to, in the, might be closer to in that 20% range.
Okay.
That's what we, in Elm Burke, we had 20%, that hit the deductible.
Okay. No, thank you.
And that's a pretty consistent observation.
Right. Now, on the page, when we're talking about the options, there's a POS option, and there's a traditional plan option, and those would be Dean offerings, though, correct? And with this proposal, or are they?
Dean offerings that have out-of-network coverage, so you could go to a UW, and I think I have that.
Okay.
In the board.
But I just wanted to know that, so for example, once it's traditional plan, that's, you're going to get the Dean plan similar to what we have now?
Right. Yep. So you'll see the third column that has the 200, 400 Dean HMO. There's no out-of-network benefits, but it's a 200, 400, similar, max out-of-pocket, the premium's just much higher. Then you have the Dean point-of-service PPO option with out-of-network benefits, obviously the maximum out-of-pocket out-of-network is high, and a higher premium.
The other question is, I understand it's not Dean, it's not SSM Health, Dean Health, it's not SSM, but are there other providers in, in-network providers in Dane County that are not SSM Health? And I'm not even going to say Dane County, I'm going to say within 25 miles.
Mike, you want to speak?
Yeah, there's three UW clinics that are.
In-network?
That are in-network within Dane County, because they do the residency program through St. Mary's. UW does a residency program through them, Wildwood Clinic is also a, I mean, these are off the top of my head, we've got a map here that I can look at it, but those.
Is this Wildwood Clinic and the three UW?
Yeah.
And these do primary care, and they take new patients, they would be.
Wildwood Clinic does.
Wildwood, they'd be a lot.
They're a good clinic.
Yeah, I used to be at Wildwood Clinic, like, years ago. Okay, but there are options.
They said it on Manona Drive.
Is there, the hospital in Dane County, is the hospital spread in, under the Dean Plan in Dane County? It's St. Mary's, anything else?
Wait. Stoughton Hospital as well as St. Mary's Hospital.
Is Stoughton Hospital SSM Health?
It's, it has a relationship, but it's, 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 it's like a lot of the, I would say, are more community-based, and there's greater ownership as part of the community than it is part of that. So I think they, it's around like 20% where it's SSM.
Okay. So, so the reason I'm asking that is because I do have, I do have concerns about going to all of our employees having to go to SSM, to essentially SSM Health. Maybe that's not true. Maybe they can, I don't know, if we bet the Wildwood Clinic as an option, maybe that's not true. And the reason I have this, this concern, is because SSM Health has publicly announced that they are going to take a certain set of values, and, which may or may not agree with, you know, be relevant to a particular patient, and use those values in the healthcare decisions, the healthcare decisions that they make. And that's a concern to me, if that's the only option that our provider, our staff has. And I really have to find out how, I really have to know how the staff feels about that before I can move forward. And I'll give you some examples. You know, it has been reported that if I want to, if certain reproductive surgeries, for example, tubal ligation, are referred to in eye care surgery, because they won't be done in the SSM Hospital, is that true? Washington Post reported that. Can anybody answer that question?
Oh, it's true, but I think the issue would be, any patient who needs that surgery, we will make sure that they get that surgery.
Okay.
And it won't be at St. Mary's Hospital.
Let me, let me ask, so if a, if one of our, one of our staff delivers through, has a C-section delivery, would the doctor be able to do a tubal ligation at the same time as they're doing the C-section? No, they would have, the patient would have to go to a second procedure and a second surgery, even though the standard of care would be to provide that, normally would be to provide that at the time they're doing the C-section, at a lower cost.
If they knew, if the provider knew that that person desired a tubal ligation, then we would make arrangements for that person to deliver to a different hospital, so she could have that option.
I see. Okay. So we're having, and so you see my concern. People are going to have concerns about the full raxis of the standard, the standard of care for reproductive health, where we have a lot of women, we have a lot of women. I don't have any complaints about my care, but I'm not in that situation, and that's not what I'm concerned about. And so if we go to, everybody has to have SSM, sorry, Dean Health, and the primary provider in the county is SSM Health, I really have to understand how our staff would feel about that before we can do that.
Just to clarify, when you said, when you need a tubal ligation, you have to go to an eye clinic, I mean, I will be transparent, I had a tubal ligation at Dean, and it wasn't that facility on Regent Street. You don't go to an eye clinic to have a tubal ligation, it's a day surgery center where they perform eye surgeries and OB-GYN procedures. So they're well-equipped, the staff is, knows what they're doing, certainly.
Is it true that they, is it true, I know, but is it true that they only do these OB-GYN surgeries because SSM Health needed someplace else to do them, because they weren't going to do them in the hospital? It's my understanding that they, this eye clinic did not do these surgeries until after the SSM Health purchased the Dean, the system. Is that correct?
Well, St., I mean, St. Mary's has been part of SSM Health for how many years?
Yeah, I want to say it was like in the 90s, and we were just purchased, like, it was before the SSM.
Correct, St. Mary's, but the Dean, yeah.
For your tubal ligation on Regent Street, before SSM purchased Dean Medical Group.
Yeah.
Because St. Mary's Hospital had that, but we weren't even owned by SSM yet.
Okay, right.
Yes, St. Mary's has had that for.
Arrangement for a long time.
Yes, like, probably their 100-year history.
Of course, that's, that's one procedure, that's, you know, there, but there is a full range of standard of care, reproductive health, that, where you have to make choices if your SSM, if SSM Health is your provider. You're telling me that Dean will see that you have access to those, those services, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
How can you say that? Like, do you know that for sure? I'm just curious, like, you say for sure, like, they're going to have access, I'm just, how do, how?
Because we knew that we provide that access through, still hospitals, UW, if it's kind of a problem here, we provide those, yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about how the costing works? In that, how's it covered, right?
Yeah, so if you were referred out to a, for example, that, it's the same benefit level, it's, whether you're going to an SSM provider on the map that you see, or if you go to another provider that's on all multiple dots, it's all covered the same, there is no difference in cost to the member.
Right, so if you're sent to UW because it's not something SSM does.
Covered the same.
Okay, but the problem that Peter observed is still true, that you'd have two surgeries instead of one potentially in that particular.
And that, and that would cost more.
In that scenario.
And that would cost more, and it would cost the patient more, not just you more.
Unless it was.
Pre-planned.
They knew ahead of time.
They knew ahead of time.
Unless they knew ahead of time. Okay.
We're getting late, I want to make sure the board members have had an opportunity to ask questions. Elizabeth, I'm assuming you're still on?
Uh, yeah, and I have a list of stuff. Surprising nobody at the table.
Go ahead.
Do you want to just swing away, or do you have questions, Philip?
Most of mine have been touched on by other board members, I may have a couple of follow-ups at the end, but I'll let you go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um, yeah, I actually, I asked a question at the insurance advisory group that I wanted to ask here so you could answer. Al, if you wouldn't mind going up to the mic, for the folks that are sitting in the audience, sometimes the mic picks you up, and sometimes it doesn't, and it's just silent. But one of the questions I had asked Al was, all the options that were provided were like GHC and Dean and all local Wisconsin providers, and why we weren't looking at some more national providers who may give more flexibility in terms of the type of doctors you can go to, right, like a Cigna, Blue Cross, Bush Shield, those kinds of things. So Al, can you explain a little bit why, like, Dean versus Cigna, or an Aetna, or a Blue Cross?
Great question, yes. So when we have in our, I'll call it purchasing group of all this, throughout the CSAT2 footprint, anything that falls within the immediate greater Dane County area, it is consistent that those national providers have been ultimately charged from the health system somewhere in that 20% more category. somewhere in that 20% more category than what, when you go directly with the provider system's health plan, than what their, I'll call it fee-for-service equivalent is. Translated, whenever you look at the insurance equation, 90, I'll just use simple round numbers, 90% of your premium are your claims. And if you're paying 20% more for your claims, you can't compete, right? For the same procedure codes at the same providers and it costs significantly more. And as a result, when you don't see any of the area districts that are using a United Healthcare or are using, as your example, Anthem slash Blue Cross type thing, they just, they decline. And we, and I have regular, we work with not only statewide but national school districts and we're constantly asking them and showing them and they understand their contractual difference. And ourselves, Manona Grove included, having the conversation like we can't, we can't compete based on what's happening. So that's, that answer your question, Elizabeth?
Yeah, yeah, and I just wanted you to re-explain that again for the group because I thought it was important. We're thinking about insurance options like Dean, GHC, courts, like those aren't the only games in town in terms of insurance. So just wanting to know why we weren't kind of widening our aperture per se to other organizations. Um, I want to go back really quick to gender-affirming care, which I think has come up a couple of times. And obviously we heard about that in the comments. I think it's incredibly important, it's just as life-saving as many, many, many other procedures we talked about today. I did fund a new policy that came into effect July 1 of this year around gender-affirming care in Dean, which feels to me like a change from the narrative that was happening kind of prior to that. And I'm curious if any of you can speak to that policy, that change in coverage or anything about, about that.
Do you have any, I'm not familiar with the change in policy that you're speaking of, but I-
Yeah, it's the Dean Health Plan Utilization Management Policy, IIII SERD2O Gender Affirmation Procedures MP9642. I can send it along to you. I think it, it may be beneficial as we're thinking about, like, if we're talking about moving to Dean in total. I think this is a really critically important one for our district in particular. Equity is incredibly important to us. I think the comment around if we have transgender staff that we're feeling safe and supported here and now they're not, that's, that's a problem from visibility perspective, it's a problem from an equity perspective. And so I'd be curious kind of what the policy around gender-affirming care is around coverage and if this thing I found is a real thing or if I Googled the wrong thing. So I'll send it to you, Kristen, and you can forward it along to the group. Um, okay, uh, do, 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 a couple of other questions. One is around data from other districts slash, I think, the commenter on the Wellness Coordinator, Sheila, which I really appreciated. In general, I think it would be good for us to invest in a wellness coordinator. We're like woefully out of policy or out of compliance in our local wellness policy, for example. And I think when you look at the research around high deductible plans, HSA, of which I have benefited from personally, I'm, I'm a fan of them. And to Eric's point, they have really clear drawbacks for really specific types of, types of folks. But one of the things that you'll read and you'll see is that because you get that sticker shock kind of right away, you know, before you start getting close to that, that deductible, even if your employer is contributing a significant amount to it, it still feels very jarring. And what you'll get as a result of that, from my understanding from the research, is folks being afraid to go to the doctor because it's better to not go than to face that bill that comes in, right? Either from a psychological perspective or in many cases very real from an actual like liquid perspective, right? Like, do I have this cash to, to pay this? And so I'm kind of curious, because this model is so popular around Dane County, do we have any data around the kind of total health benefits that districts have seen and staff have seen, right? If one of our goals is to promote wellness versus sick care, which I love that line, I love that idea, like, do we have evidence that that's true more than just a label?
What I'll do is produce, first of all, do the request, but there's a couple of specific districts that have tracked HEITA scores in age, gender-appropriate screening, compliance. And I'll request specifically them, if they're permission, to produce those examples to just demonstrate how their screen went from non-compliant to compliant.
Great, thank you so much, that'd be really helpful, Al, as we're working on the decision. The other thing I want to name, and this is more, this is for board members, is, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time appropriately so talking about the group of folks that will be most impacted as a result of the change, right? Which are folks that currently have GHC, they're going to have to move over to Dean. There are two other entities in this story though, if you think about three entities total. One is kind of district operations, one are the folks that have Dean currently, and then one are the GHC folks. And I think, Peter, you had brought this up, but I think it's worth us circling back on, that staying in status quo, from the way that I understand the numbers, Kristen, and certainly correct me if I'm wrong, is negatively impacting district operations and budget and negatively impacting folks that are currently on Dean by quite a bit. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, essentially, you know, the, the increase to the budget is 355,000. And essentially the increase to the Dean members are so high that we'll likely see a huge shift to GHC, which would keep us, I mean, if, if we wanted to transition, if, if the board wanted to, to, to move in that direction, it would be harder to do because GHC, just their, my understanding of, of how they're, they operate, they're not interested in a clinic model. They believe their providers offer that service. And then we'd have more of the population that would have to disrupt. So if we stayed status quo, there'd be some people that would have to stay on Dean just because of where they live. And they wouldn't have, it wouldn't be reasonable for them to be at GHC as well.
And is it right to assume, not like I would do this, but just because while we're drilling down all the pathways, is it fair to assume, kind of Kristen or Al, maybe this is a better question for you, that like, open enrollment means open enrollment, that means people get to make choices. There isn't a way for the district to be like, look, if you're in, if you're in one of these two, if you're in GHC, you're in GHC, or you could maybe switch to Dean, but if you're in Dean, we don't want you hopping over to GHC because your premiums have gone up 55%. Is that, is that fair? Like, we couldn't do that to people, and not like we would want to, but we couldn't do that, right? Like, force people to stay in their current plans? That feels wrong, but probably illegal also?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, question from the board members then. I think the other thing that we heard a lot today at comments, obviously we've all gotten a lot of calls and emails, is like, if this is the way that we need to go, and I would argue that like, two-thirds of folks are impacted in a, in a really specific way and one-third of folks are impacted in a really specific way, if you think about it as kind of like three entities. One of the things I heard was, if we're going to go this way, what if any wiggle room, is there an HSA contribution? And I have not heard yet kind of discussion or opinions on kind of the district proposal for HSA contributions. I know we've got some recommendations from, or requests from staff around what an ideal HSA contribution, well, ideal, I'll put that in air quotes, but you know, a palatable HSA contribution, contribution will be. And I'm curious about folks' perspective on, to me, this is about risk, right? This is about the level of risk we want to take in terms of district budget as well as understanding kind of, you know, how do we maintain good faith and also like some semblance of, of continuity for folks as they move forward? Given that, what are folks' thoughts on if we move in this direction and we make changes to the HSA contribution? So that, that's actually my question back to-
I would, I would kind of have a related question, which is, right now it makes, we have a real easy way to figure out how much we contribute, which is we contribute 90% of the lowest cost plan. If we go to this sort of system, how do we ensure that, how do we sort of keep an equivalent measure of our contribution? You know, we, we no longer have that clear number, oh, it's 90, it's 90% of whatever GHC is charging. You know, how do we, how do we maintain our promise to staff to may have a significant, you know, whether it was 88%, 90% contribution to the healthcare? And I'm not sure what the answer is. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, though, but that's still a calculation that's part of this, right? Because there's still a premium and we're still paying a portion of it.
This would be the only plan, so it would be 90% of this plan.
Yeah, but the HS, the just, the variable becomes the district's HSA contribution. Because if we start lowering that down, we'd still be paying 90% of the plan, but, you know, pay less in here. We had, going forward, we wouldn't have a way of knowing what's, you know, budget-neutral, what's, well, you know, we wouldn't know what's, I guess, what's budget-neutral, but what's, you know, contribution-neutral, you know, kind of thing. I don't know how to do that going forward. Don't know how to value, I don't know how to value this because our contribution is, could, could vary.
Well, but we would know the impact.
We would know the, we would know the impact. But the impact of the district is one thing, our commitment to the employees is another. Right? That makes, that makes sense. Eastern doesn't-
Well, we'd, we'd know what that is, if, I mean, that, that would be a decision that the board would make every year.
Yes, yes, right. But I still don't know how I would get to sort of the equivalent number, oh, we're 90% of your cost, of your healthcare cost. Because that HSA number is very-
Well, we're still paying 90% of the premium, right, Kristen, even in this HSA?
But the premium is a lot less and we're making up the difference by putting a certain amount in the HSA.
Right, so I think what you would have, the numbers that you would have to run, so I hear what you're saying now, Peter. It feels to me, see if this makes sense to you, Peter, but also to you, Kristen, kind of the total cost of the district would be 90% of the premium and then whatever the total amount of HSA contribution is. Because essentially what you're doing is saying your first $4,200 of healthcare costs are the district is paying for, right? So then that's a number you can calculate, right? If, just using round numbers, right, like 300 people are on the plan, right? Times the 4,200, let's say they're all families, right? Then that's how you get that number. And then you can actually compare that to what it was before.
I had a question, Philip, but Rochelle did first, so.
Go ahead, Rochelle.
Well, I was just going to say, I do feel like, especially with the change, it is a, it is a big lift for some folks, especially our lowest income earners to kick in that other half. So that is a concern to me. I don't know how the rest of you feel. Another thought about it, and I think, Kristen, you kind of answered it, with the four times-a-year payout, how that would work for somebody who has a very expensive medication that would eat up their entire amount for that, that one month's dosage or even sometimes that one week's dosage, depending on what type of medication they're on. But you're saying that's something that can be worked out if they fill out a sheet?
Yeah, there'd be an application process where they would submit that to the district along with their proof of the prescription cost and we would accelerate that payment for them.
And, and that would probably happen way, way, way before we get to January 1st. So they would be right in action once that started.
Just to confirm real, real quick, Eric, before I go to you, we don't have data at least easily available right now for like at least our Dean population who in the past year, you know, would have exceeded those deductible amounts? Meaning what percentage of our current Dean, it'd be great to know for the GHC too, but what percentage of our current staff would in effect pay nothing beyond the premium, you know, with this plan if they didn't, if they didn't get up to the top of their HSA?
Well, in general, you know, 20% will hit the, the deductible. That's a, you know, high deductible health plan kind of average. So there is a significant amount of people that, this would be cash that would be accumulating in their account and rolling over. So there, it would be, you know, windfall to many people on the plan.
It'd just be nice to know how many, you know, what percentage we're talking about.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Hard to predict, but from an average perspective of, of plans like this, you'll have 20% that'll hit the deductible and others will vary from that.
Go ahead, Eric.
Well, I want to reference Elizabeth's, what did you say, three-tier, three pillars of fact?
I just said that there's, there's three like entities, right? There's GHC entity, there's a current Dean entity, and then there's like district operations, which is like a thing that we should-
I got it, thanks, Elizabeth, I got it.
Yep.
So the, uh, we, it seems like we've got a lot of feedback about the GHC side. I would really like to get feedback from our staff that have Dean. And I would want to know if they would be willing to switch from Dean or if it's very important for them to keep Dean. And I'd also like to know feedback from more staff, you know, in a survey or some sort of, sort of model of how they feel about if they're on GHC and they're switching. Because I think we're like, there's, there's one way we can answer that question is we can ask our staff about, you know, who, our staff who has on Dean and who's on GHC. And we know, look, people choose for a reason, right? So there's plans that work for some families that don't work for others. So it's important to find out that information. I think it's really important that we find out that information from our staff. My question for you, Tanya, is what's our timeline on this?
Yeah, obviously we've got some constraints. So in order to give people a good amount of time to make decisions after the board makes a decision, right, during that open enrollment period? Because I think that if we stay status quo, Dean premium's going to go high. So now you've got people wondering, what does it look like to go to GHC? So they're going to need time. If we make a change, people that would be making a decision to go to Dean would need information. So, you know, our thought was next week because you would want to give that time because open enrollment period, we've already pushed it back. So November 4th through the 18th with whatever happens going to affect January 1.
I feel like that's too fast. I would like, I personally would like the information or at least to try to get the information back from staff. I don't know how other board members feel about that. And I'll just make one comment about long-term strategies and just, you know, the future looking ahead in healthcare. I've never had a healthcare plan that hasn't gone up every single year. Never had it in 52 years or whatever. They go up, that's what happens every single year, right? It usually don't stay the same.
Six years in Ellen Brook, where our premium stayed the same, six years, no increase.
Yeah, I would, I would, my point is, my point on that is, is it's hard to predict what's going to happen in the future. So sure, you could find examples like that, but, but really, we don't know. We don't know if it's going to go up, we don't know if it's going to go down. We don't know, it's an unknown. There's no way to know for sure if a Dean health plan or a GHC health plan or a courts health plan is going to increase next year. We don't know that.
No, but I think you have a better shot of controlling your cost if you have a wellness approach and have a healthier population and that is achieved with a clinic. And if you have more consumerism within your plan so people understand the cost. And once you hit the $400 deductible, you know, I can go wherever and there's no thought of, you can get an MRI at one place, it's two grand, or you can get an MRI at one place, it's $800 and does that factor into, into the conversation?
Yeah, there's a lot I don't know about that. So, and/or HSAs for that matter. And I think our, most importantly, our staff have those questions as well. So I hate to feel rushed to make a decision, speaking for myself, in something like this without that information. In fact, I don't think I can make an informed decision without that information. So I, I would be very hesitant to vote on anything that's being presented right now unless I get more information about that. And if that takes an extra week, I'm willing to wait an extra week. And I think the staff would appreciate if we did wait an extra week, if we can get it, you know.
Peter?
There isn't any way to, if we, to move to this high deductible plan with the Dean and key allow people to stay on the GHC, there's no way to do that?
Not at this pricing.
And that's because the GHC would increase there for that plan because they'd have fewer, they would, or, no, tell me, explain.
No, there's, there's a few different things in the equation. I mean, in the end, the back and forth with the different carriers in general, when you speak to it, Dean, with all the factors, having a clinic, building in the consumerism and having it consolidated, they are able to have very robust reporting. they are able to have very robust reporting that helps equip understanding of how do we, how do we scratch where it's needed to be addressed? Whether that be in the clinic follow-up, whether that be in the detail. And as a result, they gave their most aggressive pricing in a consolidated situation. If, if it is dual offering, underwriters, actuaries, and, I mean, because the majority of our clients are self-funded, we have actuaries that spend all the time, we do a different scenarios. And we look at that and once you don't know what, who's gonna be in which population, you gotta get really conservative and back off in the pricing and you just simply, yeah. And so, I mean, in large part, we're, we're unique because we have fragmented, for our size, fragmented populations that the reporting and everything just doesn't, it's, you know, when Kristen talks about, you know, understanding what's going on and how do you address it, you're, you're shooting in the dark much more so than when you have consolidated reporting.
Because it'd be nice to wait, be nice to find a way to transition. If this is a, I mean, it looks to me for a lot of reasons like it's a superior model. I mean, most people are going to see not, you know, savings. And many of them will be significant savings, most of our, of our employees. And it'd be nice to find a way to do a transition.
We, I mean, there's unfortunately not an easy answer. I will say this.
Come on.
Well, I will say this, you know, individuals that have had to make the decision because in the end, you know, extreme situations, if you need to go out on network or if you need to pay the additional money because you just don't want to be restricted to what's in the network, you know, that is available. Meanwhile, when given that choice in other districts that have had similar dynamics, it's over, after they go through and sit down with the transition to care team, it's over ninety percent or so that end up going with the HMO, almost ninety-five. And that's what the state plan is. I mean, basically all HMOs. And I think my, but in large part, the participation in the state plan with the locals specifically, that's virtually where most all of the membership enrolls. And that's another case study that we track as well. But unfortunately, the state plan has had back-to-back years of fifteen and high, you know, double-digit increases as well.
All right, so it's getting quite late and we still have a little bit of agenda left. I want to make sure that board members feel comfortable if we move on from this topic and we had enough discussion.
I'd really like to thank Mike Weber and the staff and Al for coming tonight and taking the questions that are really tough for us and tough for you too.
Yeah, I, if I could just say one, again, I just want to say an appreciation on Eric. It was when you were writing me, asking me those three, first three questions that I didn't know the answer to any of them is that I put down, like in my notes, I put medical director. And historically, and again, we wanted to bring the people that we thought we could answer the most questions. That is our intent and that has always been our approach. We have representative of care delivery, our models that we have similar to this and you know this in Middleton, if it's Sun Prairie and Wanakee, as we meet every month. And there's a screen and there's district people, there's people from care delivery, there's people from the health plan, people want to be from the school board, they can be there and then they talk about how they can improve. And, and our intent was to give you the most information we could tonight. We appreciate this process, we know it's hard. Know whatever decision you make, though, you get exceptional care in Dane County. All three, four provider systems are exceptional. So from a care perspective, no matter what decision you, like I can tell you care about yourself and your employees. And whatever decision you make, I know you have a lot of things to consider, you're gonna be giving them good care. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
And I think, just want to add, first of all, thank you and really appreciate you answering all the questions and being really Johnny on the spot. We have built a really robust FAQ on the district website. That list of medicines that are covered as preventative with no cost is on there. If people that are watching and want to dig into that over the next couple of days, we keep crowdsourcing that. So as questions are coming up, trying to get information on there and answer so people have facts. But those transition to care people and the medication concierge are on there. And to your point, they, people can call now and ask those questions ahead of any decision, just so that they have good information. So just wanted to remind people, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Is that something our staff needs to know, that we need to push out to staff for them to call and ask these questions?
We have pushed it out a couple of times. I think tomorrow morning we'll push it out again in our weekly after-board meeting update. And there's also a section on there, when people have questions, they can submit them right on there too. And then that goes to Kristen and Al's team to be able to get, take those. So that's kind of how we've populated this, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on then to our informational items, personnel committee. Eric, do you have anything you want to report or mention?
Yeah, I just, I don't have anything to report other than there was, we're working with the paras and admins and also building services. We're, we're not finished with that process yet. But we do have a meet and confer meeting on the twenty-first of this month and also the eleventh of next month with both those members.
And I can just mention on the teachers unit, we're meeting with them again at the end of this month, I believe it's the twenty-eighth. And so similar, we're not, we're not done. Our next meeting is the twenty-eighth. Rochelle, TLE, anything that you'd like to share with the board?
I'll go, I'll go quick. We covered a ton in the hour and a half that we met. So, and if anybody who is, nobody, well, there's one person in the room that is, but all of you.
The clock, because the alarm goes off at eleven thirty.
Oh, man. So all of you online, please go to the meetings, where you found our meeting agenda. But check out the TLE meeting agenda where there's all kinds of really helpful PDFs. So we covered Act Twenty, how we're implementing it. And they broke it down really nicely to explain kind of what we're soft running for some of the assessments. They're not quite required until, I believe, next year, so, oh, January. So we've already started and so I think we're well poised to meet all the state's requirements. We looked over a scorecard and how we are gonna proceed with our meetings so people can check in and see what's gonna be covered. And then it also allows us to kind of recognize what's really important and raises to the level where we may need to loop back around and cover it again. We went through the assessment calendar as to what our kids are being assessed on and how it's being presented and what time of the year it's being done. We got to hear a really cool presentation by Greg Benz, who talked about the youth apprentice program. We've got forty-nine students in it. And then summer curriculum work, we had seventy-four staff engage in a whole bunch of hours of training. So that was really successful and we're gonna meet again on, oh, and the policy zero-one-five-five, where we're adding two additional members to the committee and one staff member. That should be, the applications should be going up now if, online. Went out this morning, so anybody who would like to join us, please, please fill out an application. And we'll hopefully be making picks soon. And then also, we're gonna meet again on the fifteenth of October at four via Zoom.
Thank you, Rochelle. Susan Manning, do you have anything you would like to share regarding the Monona Grove Education Foundation?
The Monona Grove Education Foundation held a special meeting on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four and provided approval for a hundred and fifty-dollar funding for MG Future Snacks. And then received a significant presentation from staff from GDS and approved a sixteen thousand five hundred dollar grant for the Black Girl Magic Program and eight thousand for determination to succeed. Both those presentations were absolutely excellent. And as they start implementing that program, I'd strongly recommend that we have those staff members come up and just talk about those programs. They were, the presentations were excellent.
Thank you. Peter, anything to report on the FNO?
We haven't met, however, Katie and Kristen have been working on community member application process, which is ready to go live. Would have gone live today, except that I didn't have time. I was, didn't even check my email today until after the end of the day. So should go live in the next couple of days. We'll have a week for people to submit applications. We should push that out to people in the community that we believe might be interested and useful to the board.
All right, sounds good.
And I'll work with Kristen to schedule a meeting.
Yeah.
For those of us who are on the, before we, that process goes, I mean, I mean, we're not gonna wait on that process. We'll do a meeting this month.
I assumed. All right, moving on to the superintendent report.
Well, everyone stayed for it, just kidding. So first, last, I guess, thirty-day update went out earlier this week. Working on a final report that will go on the website and be pushed out also just based on feedback sharing of what I spent those ninety days doing and, and things, lessons learned. Also, just want to note, this week is Board of Education Appreciation Week. So just want to thank each and every one of you for your continued service. Point letter that was in the Monona, are in the Herald Independence with the McFarland School District, just thanking board members for that. So you can read it there, it's attached and that will be published. So we'll be working on that. And then school calendar development, we are working on twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar, getting some of the parameters around in which we have to build a calendar, solidified to share with people. And then we have some feedback questions that we're looking for from families. Twenty-five, twenty-six winter break falls real funny. So it kind of forces you into a two-week break off, which then does some things to, because it is the twenty-second, twenty-third would be Monday, Tuesday. So we've never had kids in on the twenty-third and so do we want to bring kids in just on the twenty-second? So lots of, lots of questions there. And so we'll put both of those calendars out to families and to the staff members to get some feedback around. And then lastly, I would just like to just really thank everybody for their deep dive into the insurance conversation. Obviously, you know, as we entered into the, this fiscal year, there's lots of opportunities for us to talk about, what do we want to do differently? What's a poll? And, you know, I really feel it's my job to continue to bring forward things that are happening in area districts that they are using. You know, we talk about how people are paying their teachers more and what, how they're controlling insurance costs and, you know, and bringing forward these things that's for your consideration and totally knowing that at the end of the day, you know, the sport is gonna make decisions based on what they feel is best. And weighing those out with our long-term financial. Remind people that even though we, we budgeted things for the insurance for this year, we still have that one point eight million dollars to peel off. I mean, we don't even have the amount of money for next year yet that we need to be working with. So, which we'll have in November. And so continuing to, to right-size those conversations that we're gonna have to talk a lot, about a lot of things that might feel really uncomfortable, but I think it's good to explore them, it's good to decide as a board about which, what direction you want to go because decisions will have to be made.
I wanted to comment that I really appreciate the work and effort that went into putting that together. I think it's a solid proposal, I think. But the real problem is the fact that we get two weeks to do it or not do it. And that just makes it very, very difficult for everybody. And there's a lot of questions about it, a lot of difficult questions. And we kind of dive into them if we're gonna make these decisions. But I do appreciate all the effort that went into putting it together when I think it's a solid proposal that helps move us along with some of the issues.
And I just want to say, like, I, I appreciate, you know, Mike Weber's conversation. Kind of a healthy culture when people can stand and share their opinions and share that, and that's what we want. You know, I've been out in the buildings and people have shared their perspectives and they're all over the map and that's okay, that's what we want to hear. So having people here tonight to talk, that's what we want to, we, we want to have that type of environment. So I'm, I'm very grateful for the people that have shared their opinions and, and their experiences, positive and negative. So, that's the end of my superintendent's report.
Future meeting dates?
Yeah, so we are, meeting dates have not changed at this point, but I will draw everyone's attention to, we will be able to hold October thirtieth at the Cottage Grove Village Hall. So we have worked that technology out, so we will be there at seven o'clock. As far as future meeting dates, if we want to do more after that, they are open to that. We'll see how it goes. We will have to change our dates because they are not available for the date of December, February. And so we thought, well, instead of blowing up the calendar yet, let's have that experience, see how it goes, get some feedback and then we can move dates if we feel like that's a direction we want to go.
And will somebody please send me a text, October thirtieth at five PM telling me, reminding me it's in Cottage Grove, else I'm gonna be here at seven.
That will be the next piece of feedback we get. Where was everyone?
In the past, we've met in the library, in one of the Cottage Grove schools.
We don't have the technology to do that.
Okay, okay, okay.
The, the problems all this year.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and the live streaming, yes.
And then are we, for now anyway, sticking to the Monday meeting? Is that the plan or?
I was gonna ask that question.
Yep, Elizabeth.
Yeah, so I mean, I think we had a lot of really great preliminary discussions today. I think there's probably more discussion that needs to be had. I hear also like a request for more information from folks too. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, I, do we keep Monday for discussion and then coactively schedule a, like, Wednesday meeting this week or next week or another Friday or some, some other secondary meeting to, to be able to take action on insurance for folks? So to Tanya's point, so that we, folks can move into open enrollment, being able to be educated to the extent that they can be, so they can make informed decisions. But it feels like Monday is not gonna be a day where we're maybe ready for action unless like some new information or different information comes out prior to, by the sounds of the conversation today. So what are other thoughts?
Now, I just wanted to add, you know, I, I do think there, people are watching, listening, sharing. If we did want to do some sort of short survey to gather some information, if we had a very concise idea of what we would be looking for, we could probably turn that around pretty fast.
Would it help if we emailed you specifics of what we might want to see in the survey?
Yeah, I would be interested. Or can you set, if you want to send those to Elizabeth and I, then we can start trying to turn that around. I think, you know, if we can be real short and concise and it's not a lot of narrative.
Right, right.
Right? Pick, pick, pick your thing and we can quickly disseminate that and then get it into a format that would be usable for discussion on, on Monday night. I, I think we could do that. I feel like people, they're tuned in, they're ready. I think we could, we could do that.
So we've got a weird question.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask? Will, if we wanted to make adjustments or changes to the proposal slightly, is that something we could do when we have it as an actionable item? Or does it have to be agendaized and then vote on just that layout?
I'm gonna, Peter will be able to help me with this, but my understanding is somebody could amend the motion.
Yeah, if.
So we can.
If this topic is on the table, we can do almost anything so long as it's topic related with it. The difficulty is with the healthcare proposal is that we're getting a package from, we, you know, there's not a lot we can do.
HSA contribution, we could.
We could modify the HSA.
Don't get around to that.
Or, or, you could, you could choose to vote to stay status quo.
Yeah.
They're really the two options because the status quo option, there was nothing else.
Right.
So. So. Okay.
So what I'm hearing is that board members will send me and Tanya ideas for a survey. Tanya, you're committed to working with folks to get that out the door, so we have it for Monday. If it sounds okay for everybody, we'll keep it on as discussion action. We can always defer the action and make a new date if we feel like we're not ready. Does that feel like a good plan?
A second date?
Second date, just to, just to have it, so everyone blocks it on the calendar and, yeah.
Wednesday? Well, how much time do we need?
And do you want to do in-person or virtual?
Because right now, we're scheduled for 6:30 on Monday.
That's going to be virtual.
Virtual.
Mm-hmm, to accommodate schedules.
Yep. I could do either virtual or in-person on Thursday next week.
I can make Thursday work.
Yeah, Thursday, the 17th. I could do anything after 4 o'clock.
Um, I. Not at, not on Wednesday.
So everybody, FYI, parent teacher conferences, for those who have kids in the district.
The earliest I could do it would be like 4:30, because my class doesn't get done till 4:00.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you send some dates for the backup of next, or dates and times, maybe like 16, 17th, and 18th to Tish and myself, and we can get something scheduled? That way, I know, just want to be mindful of the fact that it's like 11, after 11. And then if I'm understanding right, are we holding that date in case we need it? So we're not going to notice it necessarily right now, we'll wait until the Monday conversation? Or do you want to just assume that we're going to have it?
I think it's hard, I think it's hard to say. I mean, the sentiment in the room is that Monday may be too soon to vote, so, you know.
I'm not available on the 18th.
Right, yeah, Susan, we're going to just send your dates to Tish. And we'll pick a, pick a date and time that work for everyone.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
We adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it.